Good morning, the time is now eight or nine thirty-nine. And a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of March eighth, 2016 is called to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items to add or delete from the agenda? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries. Introduction of State Board of Education members and guests. Marilyn, at this time, please introduce the State Board members.
Good morning.
And ask the audience to introduce themselves.
All right. Good morning. As we go around the table, beginning at my left, the State Superintendent Brian Wiston serves as chairman of the board. And to his left, John Austin, president of the board from Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albridge, standing. She is the board's vice president. She's from Rochester Hills. She's busy. She's on the move. And Michelle Fecto is the board secretary, and she's from Detroit. Richard Zilee, board member from Dearborn. And then the Michigan Teacher of the Year is Rick Joseph. He's from Birmingham Covington School, and he's with fifth and sixth graders when he's not at the board table with us or traveling throughout the state. Across the table is the governor's education advisor, Karen McPhee. Board member Eileen Weiser from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss, board member from Detroit. Lupe Ramos Montini, board member from Grand Rapids. She's the National Association of State Boards of Education delegate with the board. And next to me is Pamela Pugh. She's from Saginaw. She's the board's treasurer. And I'm Marilyn Schneider. I'm the State Board executive. And as the State Superintendent said, we'd like guests and audience members to introduce themselves, so if you'd be so kind as to do that. Do you want to start, Allison?
Sure. Allison Henry. Superintendent's office. Renee Sacks, Deputy Superintendent of Educational Services. Madalena Albridge.
(laughter).
So you voted for Allison.
Superintendent for Administrative School Support Services.
That's the Department Deputy Superintendent of Creativity Services.
Good morning, Wendy Largus from the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs.
Hi, Frances. I'm here to have Michigan Special Advisory Committee. I serve as their facilitator.
Chris Flaber with Don Renew Service.
Yes, Liz.
Linda Bauer, Bardell, Michigan.
Paulson Executive Director of Learning and Learning.
Good morning, I'm Lauren. I'm President of the Board of Education.
Reed Ellison-Frank.
Was a Michigan college student.
Nicole Ellison. Karen Ellison.
Johnny Bowers.
Linda Forward, Director of the Office of Educational Innovation.
Ryan Hattie, Representative to the Department of Education.
Renee Demarest-Johnson, Director of the Office of Early Childhood Development and Family Education.
The other guy has to.
The other guy's saying things. Yeah.
Good morning, Gary Jensen, ACT in Michigan.
Karen Owens, Educational Services Division.
Trudy Pritchett, Macomb Intermediate School District.
Morning, Paul Salat, Wayne Risa.
Good morning, Paul Gadsden, Renaissance Morning.
Mario Moss, Director of the Office of School Support Services.
And I'm Marty Ackley. I'm the Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, here in the department.
Certainly welcome everyone here today, particularly the two students. What was the first student's name? I'm sorry?
Reed Ellison-Frank.
Thank you for being here. And the other is Johnny Bowers, who's Linda Forward's grandson. So thank the two students for being here. All right, with that, discussion items. The first item on today's committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation on early on. This presentation will provide an overview of Michigan's approach to providing individualized services and support for families of infants and toddlers with disabilities or delays as required under Part C of the Individuals with Disability Act, or IDEA, and known in Michigan as early on. We have Susan Broman, Deputy Superintendent. Renee Demarest-Johnson, Director of Early Childhood Development, Family Education. And Vanessa Winborn, Coordinator, Early Childhood Development and Family Education, to provide us an update on this important early on topic.
Thank you, Superintendent Wiston. It's a pleasure to be able to update the board on early on. What we're going to do today is give you what I call a primer on early on, or early on one oh one. And then we're going to talk about what the Auditor General has said about the implementation of early on in Michigan, and then connect this to the work that is going on in Flint regarding early on. So I'll turn it over to the experts.
Okay. So you need to know that early on is the name that Michigan has given Part C of Individuals with Disabilities Education Act in Michigan. Part C serves children from birth up until the time in which they turn three. And then Part B of IDEA takes over to serve students with disabilities from age three up until they're twenty-one. Early on also has been around for a very long time in the reauthorization of the act that supports students with disabilities. In nineteen ninety-three, it became Part C. Prior to that, it was Part H. And then also, you need to know that in Michigan, we've been supporting children and students with disabilities since nineteen seventy-one with a Michigan mandatory special education law. Just yesterday, the Education Commission of the states came out with a document entitled Constitutional Obligations for Public Education. We are one of nine states that require attention to the public education of students with disabilities. So I think that that tells something about the importance that we place on serving children and youth with disabilities. This next slide tells you about what the law says with regard to what the purpose of the Part C statute requires. We're really focusing on the enhancement of infants and toddlers with disabilities so that we can minimize and reduce costs to society. We're really focused on the importance of brain development in those first three years of life. And if we can indeed mitigate some of the developmental concerns during those first three years, we definitely will have an ability to maximize those children's potential and be able for those children to live independently in society. We do that through capacity building within families, certainly with infants and toddlers, where we're not going to snatch babies and toddlers out of their parents' arms in order to assist in their development, but rather, we make sure that we're helping families understand those developmental needs and provide for those services. And finally, the law requires us to attend to all children, particularly minority, low-income, inner-city, and rural children, and infants and toddlers in foster care. Early on is not a program, but rather, it's a system of services that are mandated under Part C of IDEA. The focus is working with families to identify resources that will promote their child's developmental needs and that requires collaboration at the local level so that children are identified and provided services at the earliest possible time in their development. Here's one way of looking at the structure of early on, it not being a program. We have to think about it in other ways. The U.S. Department of Education's Office of Special Education Program has been designated by Congress and the IDEA law to implement the IDEA law. And within Michigan, we are the designated, governor-designated entity that will provide that implementation. In other states, that even though it's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that responsibility sometimes falls to other agencies within state governments, such as the Health Department or the social services entity within a state. Each state agency, and here in the Michigan Department of Education, within the Office of Great Start, each state agency has a coordinator, a Part C coordinator of services, and that is our, my colleague here, Vanessa Winborn. And off to the right, in the diagram, you'll see the Michigan Interagency Coordinating Council. The law requires us to not just operate in a silo, but rather, indeed, attend to the importance of this cross-agency support. Our members of the MICC are appointed by the governor, and there are specific things within the law that he follows, his appointment office follows, in selecting individuals to be on our MICC. Also connected to the Office of Great Start, on the right-hand side, you'll see some statewide initiatives, because again, this is a comprehensive program. We can't do it alone with our staff here at the Department of Education, so we have some major grantees that we will discuss later. But in addition, off to the left, you'll see that we have very important liaisons with the Department of now Health and Human Services, working closely with our public health folks, our mental health folks, and our child welfare folks that are in MDHHS. At the state level, we can't really make anything happen without the local service areas making sure that they are implementing well. Because we are an education lead, we have selected our intermediate school districts as those who will implement at the local level, so all fifty-six school district, intermediate school districts, receive Part C funding, and they each have an early on coordinator.
And next, just to give you a quick overview of the program, our services are, and we pride ourselves in that, are strength-based, family-centered, and we developed strong relationships between the professionals and the parents or guardians of the children that we're serving. There's a lot of interagency collaboration as well, because without that, as Renee mentioned, we wouldn't be able to do this work. Our eligibility is considered to be very broad. We have eligibility criteria whereby an infant or toddler with an established condition, which is either a physical or mental condition that can lead to a developmental delay, who's eligible, or if there's a twenty percent developmental delay or one standard deviation below the mean. But for those children who are two months years, I mean, two months of age, it's any kind of delay. You don't really want to lose the children, and our motto really is to try to get to children as early as possible. Now, I mentioned the established condition. We have eleven categories here that children who are experiencing some kind of condition would become eligible automatically with documentation for early on. And if you look down that list, about the fourth up from the bottom, we have exposures affecting fetus or the child pre and postnatal. And that's where the current issue in Flint sort of fits in with lead. We updated this list. The timing was just unreal, to be quite honest with you. We had gotten information from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention that the threshold or the reference number for lead poisoning be lowered from ten micrograms per deciliter to five. And so we were in the process of doing that when Flint hit the headlines. So we didn't do it because of that, but we did it because the Center for Disease Control and Prevention recommended that we do that. Okay. Also, with developmental delay, it's either of these developmental domains, that if a child is experiencing some challenges, that would qualify them. So we look at the child holistically and in all of these different areas. And this is a list of our services that we provide. It's quite a list, and if you look closely, you can see that most of those services would require an individual with an advanced degree. So it's not an inexpensive support, but it's very expertise that we need to address and help children who are having these challenges to get on the right path and move forward in their growth and development. Our process is that we accept referrals, and we have a contractor who works with us and does that for us. Referrals also go into some of the intermediate school districts. And anyone can make a referral. There isn't a specific requirement who can do that. Your neighbor who has concern about a child can call us, and then we would contact the family and start working with them if they so choose. Early on is voluntary. It's not mandatory, so it's up to the family to decide if they want to participate or not. So we contact them, gather information about that child and his or her family, so that we know how best to develop and which services would best fit that family and child's needs. There's a multidisciplinary evaluation that's required by law, and we do that with the professionals who work with us. And using all of that information, we eventually get to the Individualized Family Service Plan, which is a cornerstone of Part C, that we have that Individualized Family Service Plan or an IFSP, so that the family and the professionals are all on the same page, know where we're headed, and agree to the plan of support. Our process includes, like I said, we have an IFSP meeting. We are also required to do a six-month review for all children who have IFSPs. And each year, new IFSP can be developed or evaluated to see if there are changes that need to occur. So those are some of the requirements in the federal regulation that we do. As a child approaches their third birthday, there's a transition that's required. So, but if the child and family meets their outcomes before three, then they can exit early on. But if not, when that child approaches that third birthday, there are steps that we have to take to make sure that the transition from early on into Part B six nineteen, or what's known as preschool special ed, occurs, or other services in the community if they don't qualify for a special ed. So we do that for every child that's there around that third birthday. Renee mentioned that we're one of a few states who looked at and provided support to young children and their families with special ed support before the federal government. And so what we have is more or less a bifurcated eligibility. So within early on, you have children who qualify using the eligibility definition that I shared with you earlier. But there are some children whose challenges are more involved and more, and need more intense services. And those children may qualify for Michigan mandatory special education within the state. And so there's a small segment, roughly third or forty percent of the children who also qualify for early on, that meet the definition for a special ed. So all children under three who meet the definition for Michigan mandatory special ed automatically are qualified for early on. But we do have children who do not meet that threshold for special ed, and we refer to them as early on only, and you'll see more reference to that later.
So you just heard about how important it is to have those individual opportunities with families to support their young children's development. And this slide tells you something about the limited amount of funding that is forwarded to Michigan from the federal government to do this work. This is federal fiscal year fourteen funding, and actually, I looked back to about two thousand nine, and it hovers right around that eleven to twelve million dollar mark. We split that award into two parts. We retain some at the state level to make sure that we're meeting our federally mandated supports to the entire system. And then we ship the rest of the money out, the majority of the money out, to our local intermediate school districts to use as the core amount of funding for that coordination of the services that exist in their local area. That funding transfer, the allocation out to the local ISDs, is based on a formula that you, as a state board, had approved for us, and it takes into account, one of the things it takes into account certainly, is the population of children birth to three in a service area. And so you see that in some very small service areas, an amount that they receive is about forty-eight thousand dollars to do all of that stuff that we talked about, whereas our largest service area gets about one point four million dollars in that federal fiscal year twenty fourteen funding. We looked at the fifty-six budgets that they provided to us as they budget their funds. Predominantly, those funds that they receive are going to be used for their local administration. Remember, we said you got to have a local early on coordinator designated. And then they take into consideration the other resources that are already available in their communities and try to budget for the things that there may be some gaps. We see family training, counseling, and home visiting as one of the primary ways in which we address the developmental needs of children through their families, along with the service coordination that needs to occur, so that families know where to access resources. In addition, instructional services and social work typically are not easily funded with other sources, so those are things that they budget within their budgets. This then gives you a sense of who, how many kids we're serving in a year. We do two kinds of counts. We do a point-in-time count, which is kind of like a count day. And in federal fiscal year fourteen, our count day showed that we had about eighty-nine-hundred children enrolled on a certain day. But we also do a period count. Over a twelve-month period, we had eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-six children that we served, because kids can be born and immediately receive services, they can meet the expectations within their IFSP and move out of early on, or they may turn three and then move on into other kinds of either community or special education supports. If, and as Vanessa mentioned, about forty percent of our children are also eligible for Michigan special education support. But if you go back and think about the way in which we had about nine million dollars, and you're thinking about those eighteen thousand children that are receiving services, you're looking at less than a thousand dollars per child to provide a full year's worth of service. And we know that an evaluation and assessment costs about two hundred dollars. So then you've got about three hundred and fourteen dollars to do the rest of the services that are needed. In addition, we wanted to highlight some of the ways in which we, from the state level, we support our early on field. We have a comprehensive public awareness campaign that is managed through our contractor, and they do child find. We have easy ways for families to learn about the development of their children and then either self-refer or connect with pediatricians or other health providers to make a decision about whether or not they want to go through an assessment and evaluation. And we have a comprehensive system of personnel development that really attends to our providers' leadership skills, and we strengthen their qualifications and increase their expertise in working with these families and their children with disabilities. We also have an expectation that we have accurate data to report to the federal government, so we do have an information project that we fund through Wayne State University. We cede a little bit of money to our intertribal council to make sure that our tribes that are residing in Michigan have the ability to identify and serve our very youngest children with disabilities. Again, we partner with MDHHS, so we cede a little bit of money over there so that they have the staff capacity to connect to policies and procedures that are being promulgated out of their agency. And we maintain some funds so that we have full partnership with parents. Parents often are asked to sit at tables as full partners, and they need the financial support in order to do that, so we make sure that we have that available. We cannot do this on that small amount of money that we maintain at the state level without the support of Part B, the big part of IDEA. And so we have identified ways in which the systems and supports that they do at the state level can also serve the needs of Part C. This list provides you with the kinds of things that are pretty obvious for us that we kind of go, phew, so glad that they're already doing that. All we have to do now is make sure that our parents know that they have the ability to make the complaints, be in dispute resolution, have mediation support in due process hearings, as well as the continuous improvement monitoring system, which is an electronic system whereby we can identify ways in which a local system would need to improve, and we can get out there and help them.
In November of two thousand thirteen, the Office of the Auditor General published a report about the implementation of early on within the state of Michigan. And there were two material findings and five reportable findings. The material findings really dealt with the idea that those early on only children did not have that long list of services that you saw earlier, early intervention services, did not have access to those services. As I mentioned, those services were provided, are to be provided, by highly qualified and specialists really in particular areas. The other thing was that MDE, the Auditor General said, MDE did not ensure that ISDs developed and reviewed IFSPs for children and their families who qualified for early on services. So on the other ones, the other five, about summer services, we have been working with intermediate school districts about summer services. We've actually gotten some to change their contract with their employees so that they can provide year-round services. Being a school system, that's been a challenge for a while. The other thing that's different for us than, say, your typical education service or provision of services, is that our children have to be served in the natural environment, an environment where you find children their age, they're typically developing tiers. So primarily, that happens a lot in the home or in childcare facilities or other places that you would find kids. Library hour, gym barre, those kind of things. And so we have to travel out to where those children are actually participating in their community and support that child and family in that community, but that's a different cost and a different service delivery system than education may be accustomed to. And that we timely provide the early intervention services, and then there's the requirement that we do public awareness and child find and help those children meet those child outcomes. So the recommendation from the Office of the Auditor General was that we implement measures to ensure that ISD comply with the federal requirements for Part C. What we've done so far to address these concerns is that we've increased the number of desk audits for local service areas. We have updated and redistributed the personnel standards for individuals working within the early intervention system. We are currently exploring a process to provide better guidance to the early intervention field around the Michigan administrative rules for special ed, so that they are better able to take the requirements in Mars and apply those to infants and toddlers. We've gotten feedback from the field that the requirements that are there in Mars, which were written primarily for school-age children, are very difficult, and they had a hard time trying to figure out how do they apply that for an infant and a toddler. So right now, we are developing information and guidance for the field. The other piece that is the most challenging, the other things we've been able to address, but is obtain additional funds to support early on. So that's really the main thrust, I think, in terms of helping us to meet the challenges identified by the Office of the Auditor General.
And I would say that in a two thousand fourteen report that the National Association, that's called the Infant-Toddler Coordinating Association, which is the association that Vanessa belongs to, they did a survey of all of the states, forty-seven of whom replied, and forty-four of those indicated that they have state funds that support Part C. We are not one of those states that have state funds to support this really important effort.
So this last slide is about Flint supplemental. As you are probably aware, the state legislature and the governor signed a bill providing additional funds for residents in the city of Flint and to provide two million ten thousand for early on, or those kids. early on, or those kids, birth to three. As Renee mentioned early in her presentation, research is finding more and more about those first three years of life and the importance of serving children and intervening early as possible. It's the timeframe when that child's brain is still developing, it's very pliable, and needs to, you know, receive the support and nurturing to put that child on the right developmental trajectory for the future. And really, after three or four years of age, it becomes remedial, but this is when you can still make a difference in a child's life. So luckily, and I think wisely, the administration did provide funding for birth to three to do the monitoring of these children so that we can identify any symptoms of lead exposure as early as possible and intervene. Also, to pay for service coordinators, to add psychologists, and then to do some community training and wraparound services for those children. Those children deserve our loving arms around them and our support. So that's what we would love to do and plan to do as a result of this, I think.
So we wanted to make sure that you had more detailed information about contacting me or Vanessa. And with Susan here at the table, we'll entertain questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, Eileen, and then Kathleen, then Lupe.
When you talk about the fact that we're one of three states that doesn't support Part C, I was curious about how underfunded it is for the state, what the demand has been that's been on that, and is it mainly money not going to ISDs? Is it administrative funds for the department? How has the, yes, leave it there.
Well, Renee gave you a figure that when you take the funding that we get from the federal government and divide it up by the number of children and their families that we serve, eighteen thousand-plus children, it comes out somewhere around five hundred dollars a year if we didn't even do the mandated activities at the state level. That's just taking the total award. What we figured it would cost on an annual basis, based on national research, that it's somewhere around eighty-three hundred dollars that that child would need a year.
How much?
Eighty-three hundred, eight thousand three hundred. If you look at it in terms of once a week, a visit for early intervention provided by one of those or more than one of those specialists that we mentioned in the presentation.
Thanks.
Kathleen, Charles?
Well, first of all, thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank you for this presentation. It's been a long time since we've had an explanation of early ons, and it should be very valuable. We've known for years now about the birth to three as being such a critical time in brain development, and we should be supporting this. This is, to hear that we're one of three states that doesn't put money into this, that's really revelation. I didn't know that, didn't realize that. So that's something else we have to be really concerned about, try to help get that done. Everything we talk about, it seems we need more revenue to really do the job that we're supposed to do. People expect us to do it, but they so far haven't been willing to pay for it. So that's really unfortunate. Thank you very much for the presentation and this information. It's really, I think, a very important program. And as I say, we've known it for a long time, so we really have to pay more attention to the early on, the first three years.
Can I respond to you a bit? Looking at states that have done research where there is what I would call very robust support of the services that are needed, if you look at what happens with children, forty-two percent do not end up needing special ed when they go into kindergarten. And so, as my mother would say, penny wise, pound foolish.
You'd think we would have learned that lesson, but what is it at Michigan? What percentage of early on children do go into special ed?
Well, as we mentioned, we have about a third or forty percent of the children who are eligible for Michigan mandatory special ed, and about that percentage end up moving forward into Part B.
As compared to the other states?
Well, the other states are, the research I'm talking about is when children actually enter kindergarten.
Oh.
And that's a different than, that's different than.
Do we have that figure for Michigan?
No, not right now, but we can look into it.
We haven't asked for that report from SEPI, so we can definitely ask for that.
That would be interesting to see that, because that would be a selling point, it seems to me.
Yes.
All right, we had Lupe, and then we had Rick, and then Pam, and then Eileen. Oh, oh, sorry, Michelle.
I might as well jump in.
All right, we'll just go around the table.
Okay, well, I truly appreciate this report because I truly am advocate of cultivating the brain early on. And having a grandchild, she's six years old now, and she's, you know, we started early on, she started school when she was three and all those kind of things. So I know the brain is ready for development. Now, my question is, how many people of bilingual backgrounds, whether it be Spanish or another language, have taken advantage of this program? And when they do, how are their needs met if there's a language barrier? What do you do?
The exact figure, I will need to get back to you, but they do participate, and we do keep track of that. We do have our materials in Spanish as well as Arabic. So we do have that information available, and an interpreter is used when they present themselves too early on so that that interpreter can interpret the information that's shared back and forth between the program and the family.
So you hire from a consultant, the interpreting services?
The local programs have.
Oh, they have internally?
Yes.
Okay. I would be very interested to see, because, and I think I have the permission of putting this in my Facebook page, my state board Facebook page, your phone number and all the information, so, and I'm going to put it in Spanish.
Great.
And English, so people know that this department does exist and they can take advantage of it. Thank you.
Rick Joseph and Pam?
I just want to echo everyone's congratulations and thanks. I know, first of all, thank you for supporting the children of Flint. They certainly do deserve our loving arms around them, without question. I also, again, echo what Kathleen said, is that there's research also that shows that investment in early childhood education is arguably more important than investment in secondary or in college education, and that the trajectory for so many kids is set. Also, there's, as you probably know better than I, there's research that shows the incarceration rates for kids that are somehow challenged at birth to three, you know, stage. So all of this speaks to the critical importance of early on. So thank you for this, and I certainly would do whatever I can to advocate for more funding levels, for sure.
Thank you.
Pam, then Michelle?
I think I'm cutting in front of Michelle, but is that a?
I didn't see Michelle, so that's my fault. I go, I'm sorry.
Okay. So again, thank you for the presentation, and just wanted to point out the fact that folks such as yourself, Dr. Mona Hannah Atisha, and those at the Department of Health and Human Services have been able to finally get across this connection between environmental exposures and especially at these early ages, and don't want to at all minimize what's going on in Flint because we see those lead levels going up instead of down as we do in many of our communities. But also want to point that many of the communities around the state, such as Saginaw, Detroit, have higher lead levels. And we also know that the housing stock that's there is not going to go away. So again, that just supports this need for these services and the funding to support those services, and look forward to hearing what's going on in Flint so that we can also use this as an argument for the need for other areas in the state.
Thank you then. Michelle, then Cassandra?
Yeah, yeah. It's a wonderful report.
I thought everybody decided they wanted it.
I appreciate the Auditor General's recommendations on that. I had some questions with regard to the plan to comply with recommendations. It said explore process to change Michigan administrative rules for special education include all infants and toddlers, or change eligibility definition for early on. How would you change that?
So we did do some exploration of that. The challenge, of course, is a policy challenge. If you change the eligibility, the current early on eligibility to map to the Michigan mandatory special education, you exclude sixty percent of the children who have some delays, but not severe enough to be able to garner that funding. And so we didn't want to go that route, but at the same time that we were trying to address the concerns that were in the Auditor General report, there had just been a revision to the Michigan administrative rules for special education, and those, the Office of Special Education wasn't ready to then redo the entire package and go out again. We had talked about possibility of creating a new categorical within the Michigan administrative rules that mapped to the early on. We talked about the possibility of going in between somewhere, and it was, at the same time that the Michigan, the Lieutenant Governor was going through his investigations and the way in which he was garnering support from the community to learn more about special education. So it got paused and on the back burner.
And that, if you don't mind me, should that, if it's going to make it more inclusive, include more people provide greater services, then it seems like there should be funding that has to go along with that in order to make it actually possible.
Which is always, adding expanded eligibility into the administrative rules would then make more children qualify, which would then pull more money out of the State School Aid Act to serve the children. And so there's a lot of things to take into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Richard, then Eileen, please.
How does the, how do you know when an intervention has been effective? How do you know when, I mean, you've got a record of services provided to a family. How do you know whether that intervention, whether it be counseling or changing diet or whatever, or a particular set of exercises to develop, something that has not been developed? How do you know when it's been effective or not?
Well, when the children are presented to early on, when they first come in, as I mentioned, we do a multidisciplinary evaluation so we can get some kind of status of their current level of development. And so you keep track of that, and you keep measuring their development. There's a trajectory that's expected for children that are their age, and so the closer that child's development moves toward that trajectory, then you know that what you're doing is making a difference. You're helping that child and family move forward and to try and get on that path of development that's expected for someone that age.
Okay, Eileen?
So, yes, I too want to thank you. I just plunged right in because it's, when you're waiting for information like this, it's really, you get really greedy. So my apologies. Thank you. I wanted to ask you several questions about the funding stream and how other states are doing it. Did Michigan ever fund this program before the recession, before the Great Recession?
No, it did not.
Okay. Then, how many states fund at what you referred to as the very robust support level? How, what is a percentage of that, forty-seven or a number?
Well, as we mentioned, there are like forty-four.
Forty-four, forty-fourish.
That said that they had state funding there. And some of the other states had to go to their state legislature to even start.
Right, I would expect that. I'm not surprised to hear that.
Yeah.
But you were able to quote very robust programs, so I was curious how many stand out.
I don't know. We can get back to you on that specifically.
But it'd be interesting to know, because maybe they've been, I would suspect that they've seen results, just as Dr. Se was asking about how you measure it.
Yes.
They've seen the results, and so they're diverting funds or adding funds. Their economies are in better shape than Michigan's has been.
And there have been states that passed laws to put more funding into Part C as time goes on. The fact that when the federal government did get involved in providing supports, early intervention supports, to infants and toddlers, Michigan, because of our mandatory special ed, had already had support there. Also during that time, we had sister agencies with a lot more funding. Those things have changed over time.
So that's what I was asking. I was curious to see whether there'd been a drop off of support.
Yes.
And it sounds as if that's the case, that we did have a priority based on this, but probably during the last ten years with the economy the way it was, the other agencies' funding dropped down, and so the support hasn't been there.
But it's also the change, the model is really what I call distributed model.
Okay.
With the assumption that there is flexible funding available in like the Department of Community Health and the Department of Health and Human Services to fund some of these services. As we've moved into what I call heavy-duty case management, where every dollar is allocated, there's not the flexible funding.
We've lost, the flexible allocation is lost, or the departments are doing something else with the money?
The departments are doing something with the money that is already prescribed.
Okay.
Then I wanted to ask about the evaluation trajectory. Your description of it strikes me as being purely developmental. Is there a pre-K-12 component in it also? Or is it, having been around children who needed these services, I'm asking this more for all of us than I am for myself. But how does that look? Is it mostly health-based and growth-based, or is it academic also?
It's, I would say, more developmental and growth-based than academic. There is some academic component in that. We want to make sure that the children are able to acquire new knowledge and skills and the ability to meet their own needs. Those are some of the child outcomes that we report to the feds and that we have to do.
Which is totally logical. So then my last question, if you'll indulge me for one more minute, is that this strikes me, first of all, obviously, we've put all our eggs in the K-12 basket for special ed now, at this point, with the attrition of the other services and the money for, the way that it's been handled. The question that I have is, when we look at something like multi-tiered systems of support, the matchup to this seems totally logical to me, and yet I've not seen another state, when I look at MTSS, I've not seen another state that reaches down in any way, and I don't know if that's going on, whether there's conversations about how to take these children. Because MTSS, when it's done well, also reduces special ed costs by intervening very early. And I don't know whether that's just a philosophical matchup or whether it could be a practical matchup. I don't know whether anybody's looked at that yet. I always ask these kinds of questions. Susan, you're laughing at me because I, you know, it's sort of like, okay, fine, you came in, and now I want to know how it's going to work next. Sorry.
No, we have not been included in the multi-tiered systems of support language. You know, I think that started K-12, and it's just now moved to the preschool age or the three-to-five-year program, but they haven't gotten to birth to three yet.
Well, having that kind of conversation puts tremendous value on birth to three.
Yes.
Because all of it is, how do you get the services you need to the kids at the right time to reduce the expensive cost later on? So thank you very much.
Michelle?
And Eileen kind of hit on my question. Sorry? And I have known people who have, in my community, who have used early on, and it was a real godsend, and it has made a difference in people's lives, so I've seen that. So my question is, are there any services that are Medicaid reimbursable?
Yes.
So if that's, so I know that there's that, the ABA for kids with autism, is Medicaid eligible? Is that something that you're taking advantage of?
Yes, yes. We work with mental health here in the state and make sure that we align our policies and procedures and make sure that the families and children are aware of that resource and vice versa.
And you provide the services, like within childcare centers and things like that?
We can provide, but not the ABA. That's done by mental health.
Oh, okay.
So that's a coordination expectation on the IFSP.
Okay. So they would do it in the daycare centers? So, they, they would do it in the daycare centers? Because it's supposed to be in their natural environment, or whatever?
Yes.
So, according to this, it's supposed to be in their?
Well, all of our services are in the natural environment. Yes.
Right. So, wouldn't they also be required to comply with the same mandate?
That, I would need to.
You can check it out.
Yeah, I need to check that out more, because I'm not sure that that's how that works. I mean, we've worked, our staff, early-on staff, have worked with the Autism Committee and Council to figure out how to best get families where they need to be and to receive that ABA service.
Yeah. Because if they're working, the parents are working, they're needed in the daycare center. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate the good information. Next item on the committee to hold, agenda is a presentation on the State Board of Education's Statement and Guidance on Safe and Supportive Learning Environments for Lesbians, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Questioning Students. Due to a variety of factors, the school experience can be significantly more difficult for students with marginalized identities. Despite widespread efforts, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning students continue to face challenges that threaten their health, safety, and learning opportunities in schools. This effort has been a priority of Board President John Austin, who has worked with Michigan teacher, the ear Rick Joseph, and the Michigan Department of Education staff and community members on the issue. Today, we'll be presenting a statement and guidance document. After the board meeting, we will submit these documents for public comment.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, everybody. We're pleased to bring this guidance before the board for discussion, before we take out the public comment. This work represents six, six months of work with stakeholders, both in state and nationally, on trying to develop additional guidance for schools. You know, there's been an increased number of requests from Michigan districts on additional guidance to support families and their students who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender and questioning. And this is a sensitive, you know, and emotional issue for everyone, including our schools, and some, they want to do as best they can by their students to support them, and help create a learning environment that's conducive for them to be successful, and sometimes they don't know how to do that. So, when, when John approached us last fall about some conversations he had had with students and parents around the state, it just seemed like the right time to develop some additional guidance for schools as a means to show them, you know, what could be done, both policy and implementation-wise, I mean, how you could go about doing that.
And as you mentioned, it was also, I was approached by a lot of educators, including Rick, who were asking, can, we're looking for help and guidance from the board, how we support these kids, would the board be interested in helping support us in developing thoughtful guidance? Yes, absolutely. And I asked my colleagues if they would support that.
And Rick has been a great supporter of us in this work over the last six months. It's my pleasure to introduce Kim Phillips-Knopp, who's really helped lead all that process of how we got here today. She's going to walk us through the presentation, kind of the background and the process, and then, and the actual guidance itself. Kim has worked with schools throughout the U.S. on supporting efforts to include, increase safe learning environments to kids, especially those who identify as LGBTQ. She's been honored twice by the Michigan School Health Coordinated Association, most recently as a recipient of the Children's Health Award for her work in this area, and most importantly, she's a fellow East Lansing High School alumni. She's a Trojan like myself, so that means she's, she's, so, with that, I turn it over to Kim.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Let's see, so, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, board members, and others who are gathered, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come and present and, and talk about the Position Statement and Guidance on Safe and Supportive Learning Environments for LGBTQ Students. Before I begin, I just want to recognize some folks who were really critical to this process, and I just would ask, there are folks who, we had dozens of key stakeholders who helped develop this, the Position Statement and Guidance, and I would just ask if you were somebody who was a part of that process, you provided input, editing, support, any kind of input at all, if you would just either raise your hand or stand so that you can be recognized. There are a number of folks. Thank you very much. I also want to acknowledge the thoughtful, inclusive, dedicated leadership of Lori Beckofer, who works in the Coordinated School Health and Safety Programs Unit. She has provided tremendous leadership on this process as well, and has been working around these issues in Michigan for a very long time, and she was a really critical piece of, critical part of making sure that the policy, the Position Statement was based on, was well researched, based on best practice, and included the voices of, you know, key stakeholders from across the state. Thank you. So, you don't know me, but I am not somebody who believes in scare tactics. We know that scare tactics don't really work, that when we sort of use fear to motivate people, that we just don't, we're not very effective, and we don't, we don't come up with creative and thoughtful solutions to issues. That being said, I am somebody who believes in telling the truth, and in Michigan, we haven't done a very effective job of telling the truth about the experiences of LGBTQ students in the state. And so, I just want to direct your attention to the slide, sorry, it's a little, I know it's awkward, having the slides behind you and not looking at me. Nearly 11,000 lesbian, gay, and bisexual high school students in Michigan attempted suicide last year. And I say that not, again, not as a, as a way to scare you, or to, you know, shock you in any way, but it's about telling the truth about the experiences of these students. And the suicide attempts that are happening are the result of bullying and harassment, they're the result of social stigma, lack of acceptance, and a number of other factors. And the policy, the Position Statement and Guidance that we put together are designed to address the issues, the underlying issues that are at play, to address this epidemic that's happening in Michigan schools, and, and to really provide some guidance for schools, some really like on-the-ground, practical things that they can do to ensure that their students, all of their students, including those who are LGBTQ, have access to the same educational opportunities as every other student in our schools. LGBT students are often an invisible population in our schools. It's not an identity that you can necessarily, you know, know by just looking at somebody. It's not like race or ethnicity in that way, and so, we often just don't have a sense of what, what are we talking about? What do the numbers look like? And thankfully, in the last two, the last two YRBS surveys that we've done in Michigan, we've included questions that allow us to get some demographic data on LGBT, lesbian, gay, and bisexual students. We don't have information on transgender or questioning students, mostly because we haven't figured out, and the CDC hasn't figured out an effective way of asking the question. But we do have good data on lesbian, gay, and bisexual students. And just to give you a sense of like what the context is, so, the number of LGBT self-identified students is just a little bit less than the same number of Hispanic and Latino and Asian students in our high schools combined. So, it's not a tiny population. It's a relevant population, and we just might not know that they're there, but it doesn't mean that they're not, you know, that they're not in our schools, and it doesn't mean that they're not being impacted by our policies and practices. And I, and I will also say that, I just want to remind us, too, that I think sometimes we can sort of forget that, that we all have intersectional identities, and that we're not just one thing, we're not just a woman, I'm not just an East Lansing High School graduate, that I'm multiple people at the same time, multiple identities, and the same is true for LGBT students as well. So, there are students of color, there are students with disabilities, there are students in our homeless and runaway population, and unfortunately, they're often disproportionately represented in, unfortunately, when it comes to homeless and runaway, not unfortunately when it comes to, you know, also having, being people of color. But I just wanted to just remind folks that, that we're talking about LGBT students sort of cut across all demographics in our schools. To give you a sense of what the experience is of LGBT, lesbian, gay, this data is just based on lesbian, gay, and bisexual students, again, so this is going to be an under, under-representation because it doesn't include transgender students who we know are at increased risk, and it doesn't include questioning students. So, but to give you a sense of what, how their experiences compare to heterosexual students, LGBT students are about two, are 2.3 times more likely to have been threatened or injured with a weapon on school property, and this is all in the last 12 months. And this is, sorry, just to clarify to you, this is 2015 data, so this is last year, last school year. They're about 2.3 times more likely to skip school because they felt unsafe. You can imagine that if you're being physically, verbally assaulted at school, that you might not want to show up at school, that it might not feel like a safe place to go every day. They're 1.7 times more likely to get Cs, Ds, and Fs in school. Again, if you don't feel safe, and you're not going to school, then it's going to be harder for you to, you know, meet the academic rigor to get As and Bs in, in class. And then, the last one, I referenced earlier, is that they're about four and a half times more likely to have attempted suicide in the last 12 months. So, we know from decades and decades of research what students need in order to, to succeed in school, and you'll see Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. This is sort of adapted to, for schools, and we know, you know, they, they have to have physiological needs met, food, water, shelter, they need to be able to sleep, things like that. Most of that, schools don't have a lot of control over, but school safety, the sense of belonging, those are things that schools have a responsibility to ensure, you know, when students come to school, that they feel safe. We require them by law to go to school, and we have a responsibility to make sure that they feel safe and are included. And we know that if we do those things, that they're much more likely to succeed academically, socially, developmentally. And without them, that learning transfer can't happen. So, the great thing here is that there's a solid foundation for this guidance within both the Department of Education and with the State Board of Education. In 2005, the State Board adopted the universal, the vision and principles of universal education, and recognized in that document sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression.
Liz Ballard, the architect of this, is here.
She's sitting back there. I'm trying to get my. They're still using it.
So, so the State Board adopted these policy, this principles and vision, and included sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression as important populations to consider. Also, our Model Code of Student Conduct, the State Board Model Code of Student Conduct includes sexual orientation and gender identity. That Model Anti-Bullying Policy includes sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. And the guidance that we developed also aligns with the Michigan Department of Education's most recent strategic plan to be one of the top 10 states in the country in the next 10 years. And so, they, again, the, the guidance aligns with those, the strategic plan as well. Also, thankfully, the request for this Position Statement and Guidance came after considerable capacity had already been built within Michigan and within the Department of Education despite limited funding. So, we've had, for almost 15 years, we've had a state-level work group that's provided guidance and includes key stakeholders from across the state, from elementary through higher ed, and youth have been on it, parents have been on it, sort of various constituencies have been represented. We also have a resource guide that looks like this, and I'd be happy to pass it around. It's in its sixth edition. It's been used, over 4,000 copies have been, are being used in over 35 states across the country, and it's considered a model resource guide, not just for Michigan, but also for other states and districts across the country. It's being used for great things for Massachusetts, Los Angeles Unified School District has distributed it to employees, so we're pretty proud of this resource guide as well. We also have, for years, have been getting requests from school districts to provide trainings, but we have developed two day-long trainings that focus on LGBT issues and providing supports for schools to meet the needs of those students. For 15 years, we've delivered, over 15 years, we've delivered 60 workshops, about four per year. We've trained 20, over 2,200 people from 322 districts across the state, reaching over a million students. And we have more requests than ever before for these trainings. We have had to cap the participation, and we have waitlists at every training that we do, which is a great problem to have, but it just tells us that the need is great, and people are really interested and want to know more. They want the information. And then, lastly, we continue to provide coaching support to districts from administrators and school counselors and teachers to students and parents. We get contacted by folks on a regular basis, and also around providing professional development training for folks. So, more and more requests are coming in from districts across the state. In terms of state laws, as you are aware, we have a, our Michigan, the Matling Safe School Law exists, and requires schools to have an anti-bullying policy. We also have, it doesn't enumerate, it also doesn't require training, those are, that's not necessarily best practice, and so, and is not research-based in terms of having the impact that we want to have in schools, in terms of addressing bullying and harassment and curbing it. And so, when the state, it's wonderful, when the State Board put out their recommendations, they do enumerate, and they recommend professional development training for staff, so, so that's good. Our Civil Rights Act, the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, currently does not include sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression. You can see the list of protected classes that are included. Individuals who identify as LGBT in the state of Michigan are not protected from discrimination in employment, public accommodation, or housing. To put it bluntly, you can be fired in Michigan for being gay, which is a concern, especially among educators, are at particular risk for something like that. And so, this is a different issue around LGBT students because there are no legal protections in the state for this particular population, and so, the risks can be greater in that regard. From, when we're looking at federal law, the Office for Civil Rights, excuse me, and Title IX are probably what come into play most for school districts. The Office of Civil Rights has interpreted Title IX to bar discrimination on the basis of gender identity and expression. They've had two dear colleague letters that have come out in 20, excuse me, in 2010 and 2011, that provide information for school districts across the country about that interpretation, and they have been, they have been investigating school districts, I'm guessing you may have heard, there's been quite some public attention and media attention around the Office for Civil Rights and their investigations. Michigan has a handful of districts that are currently being investigated by the Office for Civil Rights related to mishandling of, or complaints that have been filed on behalf of LGBT students. So, this is an issue not just nationally and other states, but it's, it's happening currently here in Michigan. And the guidance that we put together, we spoke with the Office for Civil Rights, and the guidance that we provide will help school districts be in compliance with Title IX. So, the process for developing this statement, we talked to everybody we could possibly think of who we thought would be a key stakeholder and have an important voice to share in the process. We were very thoughtful about it. We tried, we were very purposely, purposeful about the process. We tried to be inclusive, it's very well researched, and we wanted to make sure that everything that was in it was well researched and based on best practice. And part of our way of doing that was to review existing statements and policies. There are a number of states and school districts, large school districts around the country that already have policies and guidance in place, and statements in place, so we reviewed those. Places like Massachusetts, New York, Maryland, Los Angeles Unified, San Francisco Unified, Washington DC, Texas, just to name a handful. We also had discussions with major policy and law firms here in Michigan, so we talked to Neola, we talked to lawyers at Prun and at Luskin Albertson also, to get their input and guidance. We had discussions with national partners, so we spoke with people at the American Psychological Association. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has been addressing these issues for a very, very, very long time, and so, we spoke with them. We also, as I mentioned, talked with the Office for Civil Rights and other organizations with expertise specifically on LGBT issues. We also, sorry.
Sorry.
Slow, slow out, man. We also, we also reviewed the technical assistance requests that we've been getting from school districts to make sure that we were providing guidance in the areas that school districts are asking for. And then, finally, we researched. And then, finally, we researched, you know, best practices, record-keeping practices here in Michigan. We talked to folks at SEPI. We looked into how name changes, legal name changes happen, and how schools handle those things. We also spoke with the Michigan High School Athletic Association to talk to them about their policies, to make sure that the guidance aligned with, with the work that they're doing as well. And then, we started writing. And this just gives you a sense of, some examples of different, different guidance that we looked at, and different policies and statements that exist. And this list is, just provides you on examples of different stakeholders that we got input from. So, you'll see a number of the statewide associations, different key, you know, folks who represent different key constituencies for schools represented. We also had pediatricians, school, clinical psychologists, folks from higher education, special education, early childhood, pupil accounting, parents, students, community organizations, legal counsel. We really, as I said, we really tried to have a diverse, diverse voices at the table to make sure that the policy and, excuse me, that the position statement and guidance were going to meet the needs of, of folks in the, in representing these different constituencies. About 45 people from these different groups attended our review meeting of the draft position statement, and then 20 additional people provided input either electronically, by the phone, or in one, other one-on-one meetings that, who weren't able to attend the review meeting. And then, so, and then we have the, the document itself. I think that you all have a copy of the document in your packets. If you wouldn't mind just pulling them out, I wanted to, I'd highlight a couple of things within the, within the position statements and guidance.
Is that okay?
Okay. We're good.
Our shift is over.
Yeah. All right. So, the first thing I want to draw your attention to is just that there's a list of definitions that are here. It's not an all-inclusive list, but we did want to make sure that the relevant definitions were included, so that folks, as they were reading it, had a, we were sort of on the same page in our understanding of some different language that's being used. The next section of the document provides sort of an overview of the rationale, why we're looking, why, why we would want to provide additional guidance around this particular population. So, it includes data, and talks about how it aligns with the Department of Education Top 10 and 10 Strategic Plan. And it also speaks to the disproportionate risk that these, these students are facing. On the next page, it, you get into the actual recommendations, the eight, the eight overall recommendations. And I just want to point out that it says that the State Board encourages districts to, to do these things. It does not require them. There's no, you know, there's no, we're not dictating that schools do anything that they don't want to. It would be a choice that they could make. You know, obviously, we are a very local control, and we would want districts to adopt policies and practices that align with what their needs were in their, in their district. But, as I said, we've gotten so, there's so much, so much request from districts to have some guidance about what that could look like. And so, that's where, that's where these eight recommendations come from. They also align with what other states and urban, you know, larger urban school districts and other school districts that have adopted policies and statements and guidance. And, again, they're research-based best practice. And you'll see that, you know, adopting, implementing, and enforcing policies that are inclusive is the first one, providing professional development. Anytime we adopt policies, you know, our policies are only as good as people know that they exist and understand what they are and what the expectation is of them. And so, we always want to provide, or at least encourage folks to provide professional development training on, you know, any new policies or practices. So, everybody's on the same page, and they understand what the expectations are. And that would be up to local school districts to determine for themselves. Additional, I'm not going to go through every single one of them, but, you know, they focus on sort of using, if you're looking back at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you'll see that they connect, they align with those, and look at school connectedness, family connectedness, inclusive, talk about inclusive curriculum, and access to resources for students. They also include schools to collect data and then use that data to reflect on what's working and what isn't working. We have YRBS data, so it wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't need to do extra work. And the Office for Civil Rights is already requiring that they are reporting some of this data, so it's not, the recommendations don't, wouldn't be asking schools necessarily to choose, they could choose to do more, but most of, they could get a lot of information that they wanted in reports that they were already be putting together. It's just encouraging them to look at the data a little bit differently. Are you okay?
I think my chair is rebelling. I think it's pneumatic. Don't worry about it. There's something going on inside.
All right.
Just checking.
We even know they're a trade-out. Sorry. And then, the last, the last recommendation is around identifying a staff person, and that's really just to, so that people know who to go to. So, they're sort of a central place, so that information doesn't get lost, because so many people are, so many different people are holding it. The second half of the document focuses specifically on guidance around working with trans, and supporting transgender and gender non-conforming students. The needs for transgender and gender non-conforming students are a little bit different than for LGBT students more broadly, and this is an area where we're getting more and more requests. In general, what we find is that schools want to support their transgender and gender non-conforming students, but they don't know how to do it, and they're afraid of doing the wrong thing or causing harm, and so, they don't do anything. And unfortunately, not doing anything can cause harm. And so, this is the area that we really hear the most from, from schools about wanting guidance. And so, the, so that's, you know, sort of, we identified the key areas. There are nine key areas where we offer sort of practical, on-the-ground guidance of how to support transgender and gender non-conforming students. The main sort of overlying, overarching approach is that students should be able to participate in school activities based on their, in accordance with their gender identity. And so, all of the guidance sort of follows, sort of teaches, or provides guidance on how to do that in a practical, on-the-ground way. And it's certainly not, you know, we recognize that every situation is unique, and every child's needs are unique, and so, you know, we encourage schools to take a case-by-case basis, to involve families when it's appropriate, that kind of thing, and to really use a student-centered approach as much as possible. And, let's see, I think that, yeah, and again, just to get back to the Office for Civil Rights, and that these guidelines are, have come from wanting to ensure that school districts can be in compliance with Title IX and with the Office for Civil Rights.
John? Thank you, and thank everybody for hearing this. This is very thoughtful work, question, and then a comment. Going back to the slide that shows risk behavior increases for LGBT, LGV, I also understand as a correct that while these show that LGBT students are higher rates of attempted suicide, there's also research and evidence that if they are welcomed and supported by their families and in their schools, those rates are the same as everybody else.
Yeah, yeah, there's new-
Is that true?
Yep, there is research that has come out recently that, that speaks to, yeah, the concerns around mental health issues, and that if students are accepted, that that's the best thing that we can do, is support acceptance among, among these students, and that if we are accepting and support them, that their, yeah, mental health issues basically go away and become the same, they have the same risk factors as any other student.
I just wanted to reinforce, it's not because they're gay or trans that they're at risk. It's because we're not, in all cases, welcoming them and supporting them.
Exactly.
And I guess I just want to reinforce how important this is, and how needed it is for my colleagues. If 9%, and that's not even counting the growing number of kids who are trans, who are now more comfortable in being who they are, that's a lot of our young people. And there are a set of conditions, and many schools are developing them, that can help all of these young people learn, and be welcomed, and be safe, and go about the business of getting an education. And this number of young people, it's more than Latino and Asian, it's almost as many as African-American. We would never question if we should do some specific things, or encourage some specific things, to meet the learning needs of our African-American or Latino students, to help them do better. And we need to encourage some things that help our schools support the learning needs of our LGBTQ students. And as you can see, there's incredible thoughtful educators and experts who put this together, including our own Rick Joseph, who I hope will speak to it. And I know, we all now, I think, know more, I certainly do, of these young people. And I would just, again, remind us, they're not choosing to be gay or trans, they're who they are and were meant to be. And we can either embrace them, help them thrive and welcome them, or we can stigmatize them and push them away, and as you can see, put them at risk. So, I strongly encourage us to embrace and to encourage public discussion and input, and to improve too, the kind of guidance, because Eileen and others, I know there's some language changes that would be helpful, probably, that would help make this very explicit and fact-based, which I appreciate the effort to do. So, this is very important to help more of our kids learn, and that we should keep as our focus. Sandro, is that a hand up?
Oh, I was just, I just want to clarify. So, this is going out for public comment. When, where, and how is that going to happen?
Kyle? Public comment?
Well, we'll do a combination of online, there'll be an online feedback process. We'll probably take it to some specific groups. As you saw, the stakeholder list was pretty, pretty vast. If there are people you have in mind that you want to make sure we specifically reach out to, we can do that as well. But, we're going to keep the public comment period open a little longer than what we normally do. We normally do like a four-week period, you know, make it back for the next board meeting. But, we've slated to bring this back in May to give some extra time for, for that feedback.
Well, I, I'm very supportive of doing whatever we can to help children thrive in our public schools. And I think that there are a lot of, of children who, and young people, who would fall into these categories. And I think you're absolutely right, John, that we can't stigmatize them. They are as entitled to an appropriate education as everybody else, and they're also entitled to be who they are. So, and if schools are asking for this kind of guidance, then we should take that role seriously, and we should provide it.
All right, I had Eileen, and then Kathleen.
Oh, thank you. And I'm sorry my chair was missing. I had nothing to do with the P A system. I, I wanted to say that we had a very compelling and powerful presentation from OK to Say several months ago, and I didn't know whether the work that you're doing is at all tied into the anti-bullying, anti-suicidal efforts that the Department of-
Attorney General.
Attorney General's Office is doing. I don't know whether that, on the state level, whether you're doing anything with them.
Eileen, can you speak a little?
I'm so sorry. I'm sort of rumbly today. What I, what I was saying is that we had a very compelling presentation on suicides in general, and children at risk, marginalized children, from OK to Say, which is the Attorney General's Office, back in the fall, I think? Yeah. And I, I was just on their website, and they list this as one of maybe seven or eight societal factors that are, in other words, it's not, it is part of the, of the way that we look at all children. We know that there are certain risks that are inherent for kids who are in family troubles, in inner-city schools where there's opportunities for early criminalization, about the pipeline, you know, to prison. I, I, I am always, because I have a 15-year-old in high school, I'm always passionate about these conversations arising, because they are an effort to raise our consciousness on, on the kids who just need to be our social members and be accepted. So, I, I have no trouble with that, but I think that probably you should be working with them, because it doesn't seem to me to have the dominance in their overall picture that you're portraying for the number of suicides. And this, the level of suicide was very high. I can't remember what it was, but it was astonishing. It was, you know, nearly half the kids, I think, or, I mean, it was a number that just left me breathless. So, knowing, some coordination with them might be useful, because it could be that their website could be stronger for, for this purpose. And that's one thing. And then, I, excuse me, I was reading this morning about New York City, which has been on its voyage since 2002, to try to figure out how you share bathrooms in a civilized society. And it's, it is one of those, it's a flashpoint. John emailed me yesterday, I think he said Nebraska, had outlawed-
South Dakota was legislating which bathroom you could go to, based on your birth gender.
And, and people pick funny things to fixate on. So, social change is very complicated. New York City is just now getting to the point where they're legislating or requiring, I forgot the semantics, I don't have it open. After, after passing this in 2002, they're only now getting around to requiring that unisex bathrooms in public places be able to be used by either gender, by anybody. And so, you look, you look at this, and you think, how are we going to get there as a state? So, my initial reaction, my computer is off, but I, I did have, as John knows, I had some trouble with the language yesterday, because I felt that, without intending to be, it was actually exclusive to other children who were being bullied, and who were, where it was for suicide. The question will be on this, how to include, from my perspective, if there's editing, there were two issues. One was making sure that this was not a carve-out for one group of kids at the expense of other people. And I think that there's easy ways to do that within the document. There's some, some wording that I would pull back, or I would add to, and just say, you know, this is true in any bullying situation, any social situation that excludes children. But, there's one phrase in there early on about how the State Board of Ed accepts a bunch of things that I'm not sure we all do, but we all agree that the outcome should be different. Okay? And then, the other issue that I had, you've already covered, which is that these are not mandated, but they are very specific. And someplace in that journey that New York City is on, between legislating bathroom use and not having it happen, and a document that goes out to many people and could provoke the kind of legislation that John's citing, is an answer that gets us to where we go fast. And I don't know what that is, but I want to make sure that we don't, that we're not seen as pushing a social agenda versus solving a social issue. That's extremely important if we're going to make fast progress and not have people, you know, saying, wait, wait, why are we doing this? And the goal should be that every child can come into a school building and walk out four years later with a degree that makes sense to that person, and a life ahead of them. And anything that we do that narrows that window for other people by accident, or focuses on one group in a way that doesn't allow everybody to be pulled along, won't really get us where we want to go as fast as, I mean, it will, but it just isn't going to be as fast.
Yeah. I appreciate so much your perspective, and really hear, you know, your concern about wanting to, you know, make sure that it's not a carve-out, and it's not, you know, sort of a dictate for school districts on how, how they have to do things, and things like that. And we shared those, you know, as we were, as we were putting together the document, and, you know, one of the things, just to respond to a couple of your, just to sort of let you know what our intention was in terms of how we were, how we were developing these and addressing, you know, your concerns, was really, first, in making sure, you know, that in terms of, like, the bathroom issue, and not wanting to, like, sort of isolate students and things like that, and how is it going to affect other students, is, you know, the, the guidance itself says, and that we, you know, every student should be able to use the bathroom in school, and that's sort of what it comes down to. And we need to make sure that we're accommodating the needs of all the, all students. And so, we need to accommodate the needs of transgender students, and we also need to accommodate the needs of not, non-transgender students. And then, it's about working with those students individually, and coming up with a solution that works for them, so that everybody can go to the bathroom at school. It seems, you know, it seems like a small thing, and it's also a really critical issue. It's a bodily function we have, it gets to that physiological, you know, part of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If we can't go to the bathroom, we, we literally can't learn. And so, wanting to make sure that all students have access to the bathroom, and that all of their needs are met and accommodated for, and not wanting to, you know, isolate or prevent any student from, from using a bathroom that they feel comfortable in. And so, the guidance really tries to address that, in working with students who are comfortable with going to the bathroom with transgender students, and those who might want to use a different bathroom. We want to work with those students as well, and this provides guidance for how to do that for both students.
I would say the hard part on this is that some schools are on the fastest arm ramp possible, and others could dig their heels in with the same advice that you might give urban districts that are used to this conversation. Others could dig their heels in and never get to a spot for their kids that need it. It just doesn't, it's, it's a delicate balance, and I, I applaud you for, for moving forward on it. You have to articulate the best case you can for these, for these students. You have to articulate the best case you can for these students. We may need to find a broader balance for all children with these children's needs being articulated very well to make sure we all go, we move all the kids where they need to go.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, that's sort of the goal of the document, and if, you know, we need to look at tweaking language here and there to make sure that that happens, and certainly, you know, we want that feedback. And to address your question, too, about wanting to make sure that we're not moving one group forward at sort of the risk of leaving others behind, I would just, I'm encouraged to hear and to have read research that shows that when we are inclusive of LGBT students, that all students benefit from it, not just LGBT students. And that if you look at policies and practices that are in place, that if we don't specifically name sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, those anti-bullying policies don't have an impact. But when we do include sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, we see lower rates of bullying and a stronger sense of safety within the school, not just for students, but as reported by staff and, like, principals and staff. So in terms of, you know, wanting to make sure that we're bringing everybody along, that's what this does. It brings everybody along. And it's not about prioritizing one group over another. It's not an either-or, it's a both-and, because everybody benefits when we're meeting, when we're meeting the needs and creating safe school environments for our most marginalized students.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so Eileen, you're going to submit some language to us?
Yeah, I can, I can take a look at things that I think wouldn't get you to your goal. And then the other issue that I can't address is the sense of social agenda. And I don't, I don't, that's not my issue, but it definitely, I think, is there. A feeling of great concern that this is an effort to broaden somehow the reach of the LGBTQ community, and I can't, I can't help with that.
I got you, Rick. All right, thanks, Eileen. Kathleen and then Rick, please.
Well, thank you for this, very good work, I think. It's absolutely necessary. I support, I support them, I support it. I wanted to say that it's been, it's a growing area. I mean, looking at this all over, the last January, the January issue of Education Update from ASCD has a big article on charting a course to transgender inclusion. This came up before our proposal here, and, you know, reading it, and I was at a meeting last week and met the chairman of the Board of the Arts Academy in the Woods, which is a charter school in Warren, and it was chartered by McComb ISD. And somewhere or other, she brought up this whole business of LGBT students, and I said this was on our agenda, and she said, well, you know, we have a policy. So she sent me their policy. It's very similar, and it's part of their anti-bullying policy, or they refer to it. I have a copy, she sent it to me. If anybody wants to see it, it's a charter school.
Where was that meeting you were at?
Yeah. So, and my daughter, who was a social worker in Nebraska, working with the elderly, went to a workshop for social workers a couple of weeks ago, and the presentation was on LGBT students. And she said it was fascinating, the stories that we, that are told about a family in Omaha. It's that three boys, two of them twins, twin boys. And by the time that the little, one of the twins was two years old, he wanted to wear dresses. He just wanted, he wanted to be, he said he was a girl. And he wore dresses, and when he went to school, went to Catholic school, and he wanted to wear the girls uniform. And they took him to a, you know, they took him to a therapist. Anyway, they supported his being a transgender child. Had to take him out of the Catholic school, because they wouldn't tolerate it, but he's in a public school though, or she's in a public school now. But from the time he was two years old. So the things that are happening, that people are talking about now, that if they were happening before, they weren't talked about.
Yeah.
And we didn't know about it, so when we didn't know, we didn't do anything about it. Now we know a lot more, and we have to deal with it. And I think it's absolutely time for us to take this kind of action. And, you know, if you want to change a few words here and there, that's fine, but the basic outline of the guidance is really essential. And oh, about, oh, I don't know, about eight or nine months ago, maybe a year ago, I got a call from one of the United States District Judges in Detroit, who had a case dealing with a transgender child and the bathroom issue. And I know that that's a major issue and flashpoint with people in the community. Well, he called up, called me up because he knew I'm on the state board. Did we have anybody to help him? Well, we did. And was happy because he needed help and how to deal with this case. So it's burgeoning, and I think it's time for us to take this action.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you. Rick?
First of all, I really do want to recognize both Kim and Lori Bekoff, her colleague from their department, because they, raise your hand, because they've done it out, just a yeoman-like work around this issue for years and years and years. And this is certainly not something that has just come upon us. I can tell you in my 21 years as an educator that this is certainly a concern of mine. And if you consider the fact that there's 1.5 million public school students in the state of Michigan, that means about 150,000 of them identify roughly as LGBTQ students. And even a small percentage of those kids who may be at some risk indicate to me, as a public educator, that this is a, this is not only a moral imperative to address, but it's a public health crisis that's just ongoing. And we talk a lot about Flynn as being, you know, facing a water crisis, which it certainly does, but this is, this is a crisis for educators that we face every day, because there's a three to four times higher rate of suicide among children who identify as LGBTQ. And there is an overrepresentation in the homeless population due to the fact that families, many families who have children who are LGBTQ simply reject them, they kick them out. And I grew up in a very conservative Catholic home, going to Mass every Sunday. And that did not include an acknowledgement of homosexuality as a legitimate lifestyle, if you will. But it took, at the age of 18, my, the introduction to people who are gay to change my perspective, because fundamentally, I met people who were lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and over time, my understanding and my perception changed. And I was able to develop an ethic of compassion. And as an educator, I have to be compassionate in order to educate. And we know as teachers that students don't care what you know until they know that you care. And I cannot teach kids if they feel that I don't see them as their full human self and if I'm critical of who they are as human beings. And fundamentally, what I think this, these recommendations do is they say, you exist on a fundamental level. And it's that basic recognition that helps create the necessary relationships in schools that saves kids' lives. Because if kids don't feel connected, if they don't feel part of a community, if they don't feel that they belong, then they become ostracized, isolated, and many of them are already ostracized and isolated from their own family. If they feel that way within schools, then we get into these issues that lead to what we have now, which is the alienation, which may lead to suicide, frankly. And the data bears us out. I'm not making this up. It's not as if, you know, Rick Joseph said this, but this is a national crisis. So I'm thrilled that this is finally coming before the board table. Last month, I read this book, I Am Jazz, by Jessica Urthel and Jazz Jennings. And this book I only came upon a few months ago. But this explains in simplest terms the reality of life for people who are transgender and how they come to the realization that they are, in fact, transgender. And so I encourage people to look at this book again and read it again, but look at all the other research and look at all the other data that's out there as well. But the power of the narrative is what always sticks with me. And I think because our brains are wired for story, because they're wired for narrative, this is what resonates most. It's the human story. It's the human story of one family's condition. And if you look at that photograph up there on the screen, you'll see that it's not just one or two people, but it's a significant number of people throughout the state, throughout our country, who are dealing with issues especially related to our students who are transgender, because oftentimes they are the least understood population in schools. Certainly for myself, my learning curve is still quite steep, and I still have a lot of learning to do myself. But again, I want to thank Kim and Lori for their work, I want to thank John for your support, and everybody for your willingness to learn and your willingness to grow and your willingness to address this, because at the end of the day, that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, please.
I'd like to make the case for the traditional understanding of these issues. The traditional understanding of development is that we are born with certain appetites which are connected with our need, but we have to be trained in order to make right use or desirable use of them. So, for example, a child is born, finds that the lead paint chips taste sweet. That child has to be taught not to follow his or her inclinations, because that behavior is dysfunctional, it's unhealthy, it's poisonous. Now, every culture develops its own recipe. If you look at traditional kosher laws, you'll find that, you know, those slimy shellfish are unclean. And many of us, you know, when we first encountered a slimy shellfish or escargot, probably agreed. But on the other hand, the satisfying crunch of a locust is not exactly part of our cultural recipe for what's good and healthy to eat. I'm just pointing out that there are some variations in the way cultures have adopted these things. Now, if this is true with a basic appetite like eating, and if you neglect the basic principles of nutrition, you pay the price in your health. And we hear that about overeating and things of that nature. This is also true about our sexual appetites. They are inchoate. They have to be trained and formed. When schools were first established in America, it was with that idea that children would be given a model of virtue, of sexual or gender role models, uniforms, which the Clintons advocated way back when, was an example of this. Traditionally, schools have had a role in teaching normative roles in our society. And whereas you may have come from a society where the men wore full-length gowns, as they do in the Middle East, or maybe kilts, as they do in Scotland, in America, in many schools, you had a dress code simply to adapt. Now, arguably, some of these rules are arbitrary. You know, you could write, you could drive on the left, you could drive on the right. But if you ignore that arbitrary rule in America, you're much more likely to get into a crash and get killed. So I'm saying that the traditional approach to these issues, which seeks to define roles and influence children's identity before it's formed, as Maslow, as Erickson points out, in the adolescent crises, is something that traditionally schools have implemented. I think they need the freedom to continue to implement, and the philosophy and ideas behind the recommendations of the department are contrary and frankly would be foreign to the majority of American parents. So I cannot support the recommendation.
All right, Pam, please.
I just had a question about the data that you showed, and I was reminded of this when Rick talked about this issue as a public health issue. And I'm wondering if you had thought about pulling some of the B R F S or the youth survey risk data, looking at lifestyle as it relates to children who are not supported around their LGBT, around those standards. Do you know what I'm saying?
We could agree some of the other data, like nutrition behaviors, other type of behaviors, to get a better picture. I don't know, I'm looking at Kim if we've done that already, or?
Are you talking about, like, family, like, family acceptance and the role that that would play? I just want to clarify what is it you're looking for?
Right, I mean, yeah, and I don't know if we can tease some of that data out, but I know that I've looked at data around HIV, that behavior that would lead to that outcome, and how children that are not accepted or not, you know, that they're not having these conversations where it may lead, more likely to lead to behaviors that could end up in that public health crisis that we know is in our community.
I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know that we can do that with our Y R B S data, because we don't ask questions about family acceptance in that.
And I know I've seen this data, but it might be as it relates to adult, but I know that there are some risky behavior questions, but I don't know if that can-
I will say that there's a national, sorry, do you want to? I was just going to say, there's a study that was done by an organization through San Francisco State University called the Family Acceptance Project, and they did research that looks very specifically at the impact that family acceptance or rejection has on risk, education, health and educational risks for, and outcomes for LGBT kids. And so there is data that looks very specifically at that. It's not Michigan-specific, so it doesn't necessarily speak to the experiences of, you know, the 36,000-plus, you know, high school students or whatever, you know, whatever we have for our Y R B S. But there is, for sure, there's research that shows that there's a connection between those things.
So I know that M P H I, Michigan Public Health Institute, and D H H S and many partners throughout the state have just done some assessment data, and they may have looked at, I know that they were going to collect some primary data, so we may want to look at that. But I think that that, in addition to the suicide rates, may be very helpful in stating the case for the need for this.
We can share the research that Kim's referring to, as well as aggregate the data that we do collect through Y R B S based on this data, so you can see those kind of other risk factors. And I mean, I don't know that it gets to the family lifestyle piece, I think, is part of what you're looking at, and we'll also work with H H S and C.
I mean, it can be beyond family. I mean, if they don't have the support systems, that it could lead to that type of behavior. So it definitely could relate to the education system.
Absolutely.
Okay, out of respect, I'm already kept Natasha Baker a half hour. I'm going to move on, but we will come back to this. We're not going to leave this totally. We will come back to this conversation after Natasha. But I have kept her waiting for a half hour, so out of respect for Natasha, I am-
Will we done with that?
No, we're going to come back to it, because other people want to speak, so we're going to come back to it. So we'll come back, but I'm going to call up Natasha Baker to make a presentation on the state school reform officer.
Thanks, Kim. Thanks, Kyle.
As we work to provide the best possible education for all children in Michigan, it's important-
I think that's yours.
I'm going to wait a second.
You're saying called OK to Say?
On their website.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to go get some. Oh, okay. Yeah, no, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, you're fine, sorry. You good, Natasha?
I am. Okay.
All right, as we work to provide the best possible education for all children in Michigan, it's important that the partners work together to benefit all of our students. Today, Natasha Baker, state school reform officer from the Michigan Department of Technology Management and Budget, is here to share information on the work of the state school reform office in supporting our lowest-performing schools. We welcome Natasha back to the board table and look forward to the conversation. Natasha, thank you for being here, and I apologize for having you up here a half hour late. I think you better go, just go ahead.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Natasha Baker, and I'm the state school reform officer.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Natasha Baker and I'm the State School Reform Officer. I'm also a former teacher, dean, principal, chief academic officer, and chief innovation officer largely in high-poverty urban areas in different parts of the country. Today's presentation is around four guiding questions. The first of which is, what is the SRO and what do we do? The second, what are the academic trends for priority schools? The third, how does the SRO collaborate with stakeholders, superintendents, state agencies, ISDs, and measure progress in priority schools in time for mid-course corrections? And the fourth is, what necessitates SRO intervention, which is about the identification factor, and why is SRO intervention necessary, which is largely around rationale? I'll begin with the first question. What is the SRO and what do we do? On Slide 4, and the slide numbers are in the upper right-hand corner, it lists the authorities and responsibilities of the SRO under the revised school code, as well as the executive order. Under state statute, the responsibilities include assigning the lowest achievement of, the lowest achieving 5% of schools to the SRO. It would also require priority schools to submit reform redesign plans. It grants authority to implement intervention if academic progress is not made, which includes the CEO operator for multiple schools, as well as the reform district. But it also provides exemptions for districts under emergency management. To that point, the executive order transferred duties and responsibilities of the SRO from the Michigan Department of Education to the Department of Technology Management and Budget. Our goals are listed here. First, I always begin with our mission, to turn priority schools into the highest-performing schools in the state. Our vision is to move schools from the bottom 5% to the top 25% of schools. And I always like to share that with folks because this isn't just about getting schools off the list. It really is about creating high-performing schools for the neediest children. And so, you see some of our goals that are listed here. A question that I oftentimes receive is, how do our services coincide with those at the MDE? And here are a list of services and support that are provided from the office or supported by the Office of Field Services, which is largely responsible for the Title I eligible schools, and OEII, the Office of Education Improvement and Innovation. And so, there are a series of intervention specialists that support priority schools. There are learning supports as well, including technical assistance and professional learning, as well as participation in the superintendent's dropout challenge. Those are the type of services, just to name a few, that are provided to priority schools under the auspices of the MDE. For schools that remain in the bottom 5%, the priority schools, we have transitioned our focus in the SRO to streamline superintendent communication and involve them to establish expectations, transparency, consistency, and clarity. You would be surprised at how many superintendents, because they had delegated so much of the work, were not altogether always informed about what was going on. And there are some superintendents that are far more involved in their priority school process and the turnaround process than others. I will admit that. One of the other supports that the SRO provides includes access to training relative to standards in a cohesive and easily accessible format to target and customize the individual unique needs of each priority school. The other thing folks don't always realize is that not all priority schools are created equal. There are some priority schools that do very well, but they carry the status for four years regardless of how well they do. Number three, we also provide customized turnaround interventions based on need, data, and superintendent's requests. Recently, I was having a conversation with Superintendent Sue Carnell in Westwood Community, and she has a different need than other schools. She wants the SRO to support in the area of differentiating instruction as opposed to some other areas. That's unique to what she feels her teachers need from our services. And so, we are, in addition to what we've already provided, will be going back to Robishaw High to support her in that area. Number four, we also provide what we call real-time, school-wide, student-level data every six to eight weeks. And so, that's hugely important because by the time a kid sits for an exam, they know what they know. It's already too late at that point. What we know from high-performing, high-poverty schools is that they are looking at data every six to eight weeks. They understand which kids are in Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 every few weeks. They're not waiting till a student sits for an exam to get that information. And what that allows for is what we call mid-course corrections in time prior to a child sitting for a high stakes examination and/or being in a position to transition out of high school. Number five, we also take a close look at the response to intervention systems. A lot of folks are always surprised that those systems are not altogether formalized in high priority, in priority schools. Sometimes people say they have intervention systems, and then when you say, what percentage of your kids are in Tier 2, they can't tell you. That's problematic because if you're not clear on which kids have transitioned into Tier 2, then how can you target the core instructional needs that they have? The second guiding question is, what are the academic trends for priority schools? We know that the highest concentration of priority schools is in Wayne County. We also know that over the past five years, 331 schools have been identified statewide as having priority status or being in the bottom 5%. 73 schools have been closed by district decision. 74 have been released. And we currently have 184 schools that carry the priority school status. And the data points are listed below. I say this frequently. There are only five cohorts of priority schools statewide. Wayne County, again, has the highest concentration of priority schools. In the past five years, over 300 unique schools have been identified. And priority school status, and this is really important for folks, does not necessarily mean that the school's top-to-bottom ranking is still below 5% because priority schools carry the status regardless of how well they do in that time period. Here are some quick trend slides. This is third grade reading. The blue line is the state. The reddish-purple line, purple, I think, is, includes all priority schools. And this is prior to the release. This data was pulled last summer. This is, again, third grade reading. Let's see. So, we had, I'll stop confusing now. You'll have, you have third grade reading, or third grade math first. You see the gap there. Then you see third grade reading. There's still that gap. Eighth grade math. Bottom line is priority schools. Top line is all the state. I'm on Slide 13. Eighth grade reading. There's an upswing, but the gap still remains. Slide 15, what's unique is that everybody graduates. Right? So, the majority of kids graduate, but we know that there's an academic gap there. Slide 16 is an outlier. Out of all the 331 schools that have been identified, whether they've closed or not, we know that two, Hazel Park High School and Weberville High School, have actually reached that top 25%, right? So, Hazel Park was identified in 2012 with a top-to-bottom ranking in five. They had a top-to-bottom ranking in 2013 of 48. And they were released based on their 2014 top-to-bottom ranking. And the other two exit criteria, because they had reached a top-to-bottom ranking of 85. So, what this proves is that it isn't easy to turn your school around. It certainly isn't easy to turn around a high school, but it is in fact possible in the state of Michigan. The third guiding question has to do with the SRO, how we collaborate with stakeholders, including superintendent, state agencies, and ISDs, and measure progress in priority schools in time for mid-course corrections. You heard a little bit about how we look at data every six to eight weeks. Here are some things that we do in addition to that. We're currently creating what's known as a feeder pattern project. And we're working in collaboration with Washington, Washington ISD to do that work, as well as MSU and our own data team. It's important to know before sanctions are placed on schools, which schools in Michigan actually feed the chronically low-performing schools in the state over time? Which schools do that? What are the key variables that are involved? How should this information inform communities and our own decision-making process? And then you can see a great example of this work. If you take a look at Pinellas County, Florida, the trend study that they've done in Tampa, in the Tampa Bay Times. We're also measuring progress, again, as I mentioned earlier, towards standards mastery. Which standards are being taught and how well are kids doing? That's important because a lot of times, particularly in low-performing schools, kids are being tested on material that was never taught. Right? And so, once you teach material, we also need to know how well the kids do, who didn't master what. And whenever you know who didn't master the material, you can reteach it, or you can transition them to new material. But if you're not tracking that and no one in the school knows that, it's really a crapshoot when they sit for the exam. Number three, we are increasing shared accountability for all stakeholders and providing a next level of accountability for chronic low performers. What that means is, we involve superintendents. Superintendents are the leaders of the organization. They have all access to everything that goes on in the priority schools. And we see more success and more opportunities where superintendents are actually engaged in this process. Number four, we're also including quantitative and qualitative data in our, in our decision-making. So, it's important to know which schools, or not just priority schools, but which priority schools have consecutive years of low proficiency. There are high schools that have not one kid proficient. And not all of those schools are in Detroit, believe it or not. We also look at quantitative data to understand who's been in the bottom 5% for consecutive years. And then obviously, those qualitative data components are hugely important because schools with emergency managers or districts with emergency managers are outside of the purview of the SRO, which means we do not have legal right to engage in those particular schools by state statute. So, that's an important data point. And there are also considerations around who has formalized intervention systems that measure actually intervention, how well is that working in terms of our decision tree when we're looking at next levels of accountability? The last question is just about what necessitates the SRO intervention and why is it necessary? So, what are some of the identification factors and why is it necessary? So, I always go back to the accountability process for the SRO. It's important to know that all priority schools actually submit a reform redesign plan. Even the emergency manager, district, or schools, they also submit plans, not because they have to necessarily, but because they want, they too want to be compliant and turn around their schools. So, all priority schools submit redesign plans. The SRO, under my leadership now, instead of just looking at compliance components, we actually facilitate superintendent-led turnaround, and we monitor student achievement performance outcomes every six to eight weeks. So, every six to eight weeks, rightfully or wrongfully so, we know how many kids have been suspended in priority schools. And that data point can be, the quality of that data point is contingent upon what's submitted. But we know that it's high, higher than other schools. If priority schools meet all academic exit criteria, and here are the three exit criteria on the left, that includes percentile rank of 5% or higher, annual measurable objectives for both math and reading, meeting those annual measurable objectives for math or reading, and testing 95% of their students, then those schools will be released from priority status and return back to the school improvement plan to carry on as a non-priority school would in the state of Michigan. If priority schools do not meet academic exit criteria, when they become eligible for release, the SRO transition or has the authority to transition the school to the next level of accountability. And that includes a CEO option, placement into the reform district, or closure. I want to point out the fact that closure is an absolute last resort, and it is circumstantial, right? So, you have, we have to have somewhere of higher standing or higher performing schools for those kids to go before we issue a closure. And that's hugely important. So, you see closure includes a last resort and circumstantial contingencies apply. This last slide is about college readiness because it speaks to the rationale. By the time a kid graduates from school in Michigan, they ought to have the skill set to go on and do whatever they want in life. And so, whether or not that's college or some sort of technical career, it's totally their call. But it's our job to make sure that they have the skill sets to do that. One measure in our country to determine that includes college readiness. And as you can see, over a five-year period, the gap remains between the state and priority high schools.
Okay. Questions? John, please.
Thank you very much for coming. And thank you, sorry you had to wait, but thank you for sharing your report. We've been looking for this. I guess, as you know, we were not, we didn't feel it was going to be as effective or constructive to remove the turnaround office from the department when it happened, that it would be more effective. We could focus on effective turnaround dramatically working together. Given to the executive order stated, nothing in that order would be to compromise the policy and leadership of the State Board of Education. We very quickly, with Brian's help, gave, offered you our recommendations on what school turnaround policy to be effective needs to look like. And we lifted heavily from friends in Massachusetts and their turnaround strategy, which I quote is, and I quote, "Our policy is focused on really providing assistance and to help local districts succeed at turning around their own schools." As you know, Massachusetts brings resources, support, research-based, to improve teaching and learning to the folks in the schools. And only in the most extreme cases do they then joint-operate with a district turnaround program, only in the most extreme cases. And so, I guess our, our policy guidance on school turnaround includes multiple steps over many years. Do we do an audit and assess the needs? Is a plan made with the school, community, and its leadership to turn around the school? Our support and resources brought to that school are then, progress assessed over time. And only if that fails to contribute to better learning outcomes is one of the more dramatic CEO or other options made available. That's our recommendation to you. So, a particular question is, you've moved to a CEO model in East Detroit and have asked for resources to open up CEO models around the state. What set of processes did you go through with those schools over some years to audit, assess, support the operation of a plan, and assess the impact of their plans before turning to a CEO model?
Sure. So, I feel like that's a multi-part question. To your first point, I'll just make it a point to say that it, I think that the guidance that was shared, quite honestly, from the board came a little too late. Had those turnaround, had that turnaround guidance been shared prior to the executive order, maybe things had, would have been different from the executive office's perspective. So, I do want to put that on the table. The latter part of your question deals with what were the criteria that were used to be assessed. I do want to point out to the board that the schools that have consecutive years of poor performance have not, A, had a high percentage of kids proficient in math or ELA. They have had top-to-bottom rankings below 5%. And we looked at percent proficient in reading and math over time, right? And so, there are a list of schools that have been chronic, what we call chronic low performers. I can tell you right now that some of the lowest-performing high schools in the state have less than 10 kids proficient in math. I can tell you right now that some of the hottest, the lowest-performing high schools in the state of Michigan, right now, our graduating kids were not one kid in the last five years has done well in both math and reading. What that means is, that we have schools in the state of Michigan that are graduating 85% of their graduating class, but less than 25% of those kids are proficient in core content areas needed to be successful in careers and college and life. And so, we looked at a variety of factors, some of which, to your point, to just be clear, included the number of times they were identified, the current ranking over time, percent proficient in reading, percent proficient in math. And so, those were some of the criteria that we looked at when we opted to transition schools to a next level of accountability. In addition to that, we looked at, if it were a high school, we said, okay, is it just a standalone high school that's having these troubles? Or are there feeder patterns that are playing into why these high schools have been low-performing over a five-year period? And so, I'm not just speaking to schools that are identified in the bottom 5%. I'm referring to schools that have held on to a consecutive zero for three consecutive years, or schools that have been below 5% for consecutive years. And I think it's important to point out what happens to society when we continuously graduate children, particularly the neediest students in the state, who have struggled tremendously in reading and math. And so, those are just some of the criteria, or those are the criteria that we looked at to identify who needed a next level of accountability and what was the right system for that.
Just a quick follow-up.
Yes, sir.
So, I think we're all most concerned with what's going to be most effective in helping those kids get an education, and whether a supportive, working with and helping improve their learning environment with the folks there would be more effective than a takeover model. But did you suggest that you have not been following or ignoring the policy direction from the State Board of Education?
I did not suggest that.
Rick, a sender?
Thank you for coming today and answering our questions. I want to follow up on John's question about the CEO model. I understand that your office has made a request to legislature for a $1 million supplemental for this fiscal year, and then I believe $5 million for the next fiscal year to hire more CEOs. year to hire more CEOs. So I want to talk about the role of the CEO for a moment. I reviewed current legislation, 380-1280C, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically a CEO has a lot of authority. They have both financial and academic authority over multiple schools, including employment, control of funds attributable to pupils at the school without consent of the local Board of Education, can permanently close a school without the consent of the local Board of Education, can sell that closed school without the consent of the local Board of Education, can convert a school into a public school academy without the consent of the local Board of Education, and essentially has the power of the local Board of Education administration for that school. Is that your understanding of the role that CEOs are given in legislature?
I'd like to respond to that question with everyone having a copy of the state statute. If you look at page two, you can look over the language to which Cassandra is speaking. It is on page two, and it is number seven.
Thank you very much.
Could you take a look at page two? About three-quarters of the way down, it's number seven there, it speaks to the CEO model. We do plan on following, following the full letter of the law. However, under my leadership, it is my intent to ensure that we hire an academic expert who behaves and makes the types of decisions that are in the best interest of the children. I can tell you that I speak to both McComb quite often in the last few months and have met with them regularly. I also just got off the phone yesterday with Dr. Ryan McLeod, who I connect with quite regularly. We have a, I have a very solid relationship with Ryan, and he trusts me, I trust him. And in education, that's important because in order to create a high-performing school, it is important that we do what's in the best interest of children. And so we are hiring a CEO. You are absolutely correct. But make no mistake, that we will collaborate with the district and the school board. And the school board's president is Craig, Ryan is the superintendent, and I'm in very close contact with Ryan on a regular basis to make sure this is a collaborative effort. So although these stipulations are stated here, and it is within the full letter of the law for a CEO to do that, our intention is to work collaboratively with the district as we have demonstrated since the summertime.
So my question actually had more to do with the input of the citizens involved in this process. If this person has the right to essentially assume the role of the Board of Education, what is the role of the citizen, the taxpayers who are actually paying for these buildings? Are there public hearings? Do they have any input? Or are they just kind of blindsided with a news release saying, oh, by the way, we're putting a CEO in your school?
Dr. McLeod and I, again, work very closely together. At the end of every conversation, I ask, how are your teachers doing? How are your kids doing? And yesterday, he said, Natasha, we're doing well, they're motivated. I've had a conversation with them, I've shared the documentation that you've shared with me. And so he is in a position right now to maintain absolute transparency with the community. Once we sit down with the board and have a certain dialogue, the next step from there is for Ryan and I to connect and make sure we get in front of the teachers so that they can see what the SRO does, what it doesn't do. And from there, after we have the adults in the educational setting on one accord, it's then appropriate for us to go in solidarity to the community. But I want to assure you that those dialogues are happening and that we are doing this in a phased-in process. It's important for the board to be actively engaged, as they are in Massachusetts. It's important for me to stay in close communication with Ryan, as I do. And so the communication with the community to which you speak is in the process of being organized. However, there are steps that need to, that are taking place prior to that day.
So that communication happens after decisions have been made, not before?
Which communications?
With the people who are most affected by this, with the parents, with the taxpayers, with the citizens.
Ryan McLeod, Dr. McLeod has been in communication with his parents prior to, during, and after. He's a strong new superintendent to that area. We have a good relationship. So I think I would be remiss to communicate that he hasn't done that. He's done very well being transparent with the community.
But your office doesn't take a role in that at all?
We will eventually, but right now, I don't want to undercut Ryan. I've told him that I would never do that to him, and he knows that I wouldn't. So we've had multiple conversations about how to communicate and to whom, and it's worked well so far.
Okay. So just to kind of follow up on the items that are in the law here, it seems to me that a CEO actually has more authority than an emergency manager because they also have oversight over academics. So I have two kind of concerns about that. Well, actually, one I just mentioned, which is the role of the citizens, but the other, I'm wondering if we can acknowledge the fact that emergency management hasn't worked. I can point to numerous examples where the state has come in, taken over, and left it in worse condition than when it started, which I think is the major concern with everybody that I talk to about the CEO model. It's that it's not based on something we've done that's been successful yet. And so I guess my question would be, why would we think that this, which is essentially an emergency manager on steroids, would be more effective than what we've already done, which has proven not to be effective?
Whenever someone kind of makes the connection with the emergency manager, I try to take them out of that box and kind of ask them to release the parameters. Right now, the highest-performing state in the nation is Massachusetts. They do a model that is similar to what we've created here. They put schools into receivership, and they do their due diligence to do that. I didn't read about Massachusetts and decide to create a model. I actually took my entire team after I reconstituted the office and provided the state with folks in the reform office who have done the work at a leadership level, in the classroom, in the social, social cycle world. I think it's important to note that we actually took our entire team to visit my counterpart, Joan Tuttle, in Massachusetts. We sat with her entire team for four days. Some of the work was at the department, some of it was in schools. And we learned explicitly the process that they go through for their high-performing and high-poverty schools, as well as their low-performing, high-poverty schools. And so the model that we brought back to Michigan wasn't just designed in isolation as a Michigander. We took what we have, and we understood what the highest-performing state does, and we created this model. So I would ask folks to just be a little bit more open-minded and just to realize that it's not modeled after the EM. What we've designed in the SRO, under my leadership, is designed after the model in Massachusetts.
Right. And I appreciate that, and I think there are some very big differences between Massachusetts and Michigan. But I'll just make one last point, and then I will open the floor. But Massachusetts is operating under Massachusetts law. Michigan is operating under Michigan law. And under Michigan law, these things are possible. And I think that we have seen time and time again where the stuff in this law is imposed on our local school districts, and it doesn't work. And I think that's the concern. I'm just going to reiterate it again. It's great that it's based on a model in Massachusetts, but it's following Michigan law. And that's where I think your issue is going to come into play with trust and everything else in the state.
I think that policy and practice are hugely important. It's one of the things that we see aligned in Massachusetts. And I think it's also important to recognize that execution is about the skillset of the people who are doing the work. And if you've got people who can be trusted, who have the skill to boost instructional quality, who have the leadership ability to garner support and motivate and not undercut or lie, this work can be done well in Michigan.
All set? Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you. It's really, really wonderful to hear this. To underscore what you were talking about, how that 85% of our kids are graduating even though they're not competent to do so, not competent for real life. I spent Monday with Representative Santana and a number of legislators at Henry Ford High School. And the presentations that we had from former gang members, former convicts, former undercover drug agent, prison warden, social workers, principals from both charter schools and traditional schools, one of the biggest things that came out was that the former gang members begged for no more social promotion. These were young men who had served time in prison already, were in their early 30s, and had come back to the community with the ex-convicts to try to provide the support for what they call the daddy issue, that there are no men in the community, or very few, because people are in prison or they died. And they said that there is nothing worse than walking into ninth grade and discovering that there are kids who can read and write at grade level, but they can't, recognizing that the culture of the school doesn't provide remediation for them at that point. Most schools don't. You remediate K-8, and then you try to prevail and go forward in 912, and that there is no chance for them. So they stay in school, as they said, to either deal drugs or to pass the time if they can function and be nice, and because they'll end up graduating, that 85% number, or going out in the streets because you can make more money selling drugs in the long term on the streets when you go early. So I commend you for the kinds of things, the deep work that you're doing to make a difference in these schools. And having visited Michigan State recently, sitting with Barbara Markle and looking at their, the level of data that they're crunching and trying to convert to usable information, I would pass on their, I wouldn't say plea, but I would say nudging, that as you go through finding out what data really does make a difference for children, that you do what the rest of the state has been doing recently, which is to look at reports and figure out whether the data gathering is essential for the progress that you need to measure. And I'm sorry, I'm campaigning on their behalf, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Michelle, please.
Thank you. So I was looking through your, the website, I don't know how to get off feeling, and I came across this paragraph that says, on June 12, 2015, it's a short paragraph, "Executive Order 2015-9 Transfer the SRO from the Michigan Department of Ed to the Department of Technology, Management, and Budget." "We see this as an opportunity to learn from experience and take actions necessary to drive rapid turnaround statewide. To meet this challenge and opportunity, the SRO has developed a multifaceted approach supporting priority schools and districts that builds upon research and best practices, addresses obstacles that have hindered previous turnaround efforts, and identifies contingencies and strategies for mitigating potential obstacles that might derail our efforts." So my question is, what are the obstacles that have previously hindered turnaround efforts? And what do you see as the contingencies and strategies for mitigating these potential obstacles that might derail the efforts now?
That's a large question. I think just to narrow it a bit, the SRO received a lot of resistance in the MDE, quite honestly. There are different schools of thought. There are folks who feel like they should go into meetings and talk reform and turnaround without the superintendent's involvement. There are folks who felt like, without the leader, the head of the organization, the work is really difficult. Because you need someone in a leadership position to reinforce what's important for kids. You need a way to streamline information. And so I believe that there were just different schools of thought between the SRO, which is more of a triage, emergency room type of experience, whereas school improvement is more gradual, and it should be, continuous, right? But over time, if that school improvement doesn't work in four years, there ought to be another course of action. Because again, we aren't dealing with widgets, we're dealing with human lives here. And so to that point, when we write and when we say that there are challenges, organizationally, it was difficult to have innovative ideas and to release schools. I wasn't even allowed to release schools until I transitioned, but I had been working in the organization, in MDE, in this role, trying to release schools, trying to let folks know that if we let schools go, because of the stigma that it carries, it provides an incentive that's needed in the field. Even that decision was not allowed. So there were a number of challenges that we faced, and that's just an example of one. Now, if you ask a superintendent what are some of the challenges, they might speak to, you know, having to set aside certain amounts of their federal state dollars, their Title I dollars, not having the flexibility they want to do what they need on the ground. So it really is contingent upon who you ask about the challenges. Those are just two.
Could I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Another question. Well, this is a related question, but one that always I see as a fatal flaw to the whole reform movement, is the reliance on these tests, that the American Statistical Association are an invalid measure. And so we rely on measuring what, who is proficient or who isn't proficient, or what schools should be open, what schools should be closed, what teachers should be hired, what teachers should be fired. But we rely too heavily on these standardized tests. And for instance, I pulled up some data that talked about special education. And so in Detroit, of all of Wayne County, there are, I had it written down, oh, here it is. So the head of the special ed department pulled for me the FTEs for, you know, the services, the service hours that are provided, to moderately cognitively impaired, severely cognitively impaired, and multiply cognitively impaired, or multiply, yeah, impaired, severely impaired. For all of the charter schools in the entire Wayne County, the answer is zero for the 1415 year, from which I had the data. Though that, the bulk of that work is put on traditional public schools. And in Detroit, they have almost 20% of the, or it's closer to 20, no, it's 16.74, let me exaggerate, was specialized students, but of those, an even larger degree were the most severely disabled. The charters aren't taking them, and the EAA is not servicing them. I mean, so it's been estimated that it leads to like 40 million out of the DPS budget every year, of the general funds, to subsidize what's needed. So I say all this to say, I give that as an example of some of the complicating underlying factors that don't always get identified when we're looking at academic or fiscal quote-unquote failures, not to mention, and I've heard that you look, you do look at absentee rates, which I think is awesome. I really applaud that, because I think that has a huge effect on that. But to my question is, I understand that your office was going to be compiling the top-to-bottom from now? That's part of your role, is to compile the top-to-bottom list? Is that correct?
We work in collaboration with the MDE. That is in 1280C.
Okay. And given that there's going to be the ESSA, it's going to allow to some more flexibility on things. And given the people, the communities, a lot of folks complaining, and even Obama admitting that that was a failure with all this testing, so what is, what are your plans to more effectively assess schools that are considered successful or not, without being able to rely on standardized tests, and taking in all of the mitigating circumstances, like special education and poverty? So that's a big old question, I'm sorry, but I had to fit like four in one.
Let me just say, I think we're going to work very collaboratively to develop a process that this board will be very involved in, the governor's office will be very involved in, the legislature, the field. I mean, we really have an opportunity to envision a different future. And I'm excited about being able to envision that different future, all of us sitting together, including Natasha, having a prime seat at the table. And it will be a very inclusive process, and I think a very exciting process, because I think we have much more flexibility than we had in the past. And I think we can design a future that does help every student be successful, and that's, we'll work together to make that happen.
Will we be getting rid of these intervention models? Would they fire the principal and do all this stuff too? Because that's an opportunity to get rid of these things.
Well, I think we want to make sure that we do maintain some continuity. So it's going to be important that if something is working on the ground level, and that they're planned, they can get behind it, the teachers are supportive, that that doesn't change for the sake of change. If something isn't working, we ought to be flexible enough to say, it's not working, let's move forward. And so I just want to provide that leverage there for locals.
Does that include like firing all the teachers and the principal? I mean, that doesn't sound like very.
If they're not working, she said, teachers are working.
And we have four models they can use.
We'll bring it up to legislative committee.
Yeah, but I think you're right, those are important questions. Those are, Michelle, I think those are important questions as we move forward. Anything else, or are we ready to move on? Kathleen? Kathleen and Pam?
Thanks, Natasha. It's very informative for us. I had a question on this, how you exit from this. It talks about, it meets all of your academic, all these exit criteria. Percentile rank of 5% or higher, we had said, we're not going to measure that for the next couple of years because of the change in the test. So what list, what list are you using for the 5%, for lowest 5% now? How do they get, how do they get off of that? Above the 5%, if they, we're not changing the 5% list, the top-to-bottom list.
So two responses to that question. The first is that we have posted on our site.
The first is that we have posted on our site the schools that are in the bottom five percent currently, and that data is, that the data that we used for that list was the last available data. So that's from 2014, right? So fourteen, fifteen was the first time the assessment was given, and so the list that we had prior to that first time that the assessment was administered still stands. And so schools that were released are based on that 2013, 2014 data.
Oh, okay.
And so we're going to work in collaboration with the MDE, to Brian's point, around identification of the bottom five percent, given the data that we'll, that we'll have here pretty soon.
Okay. I had another question. I understand you said that if the school district is under emergency manager, you don't have anything to do with it.
Understate statute, emergency management.
So Detroit, you don't deal with DPS schools?
The DPS schools, as long as they're under emergency management, they do not fall under the purview of the SRO.
What about the EAA schools? Do you deal, do you handle those? Because they have schools that are the bottom five percent.
They do, and they have submitted reform redesign plans, and I do connect with Veronica Conformant quite often.
Oh, you do? So are any of those schools, are you working, the SRO working in those, any of those schools now?
I connect with Veronica quite often, but she does have a lever, she does have the latitude to try some innovative things in those particular buildings. I'm not really at liberty to go into much more detail than that around DPS and EAA, as they are sensitive topics with everything that's going on in the state right now.
Okay. Because I understood, the information I heard was about the East Detroit schools, that they had been working very closely with the Macomb Intermediate School District, and they were surprised that it went in there, they thought they were working with the ISD and would not be part of the SRO. So I don't know, I'm curious as to how that proceeded, how come you did that?
Sure. So what I don't know that folks are aware of is the fact that we have been in constant communication with Macomb ISD. In fact, we have a priority school contract with them to do the work. The ISD has been heavily engaged in all of their priority schools. East Detroit had maintained its current ranking of zero and have fluctuated between zero and three over time. Not only that, but they also now have Bellevue Elementary, Kelly Middle, and Pleasantville Elementary that are all, that all have top to bottom rankings of one. And so sometimes the supports are very helpful and engaging, and it's a very robust ISD, and sometimes there are some, you know, circumstances that warrant further intervention, and this is one of those. What we see in East Detroit is a feeder pattern. We see that a high school is struggling to get out of the bottom five percent, but that their feeder pattern has also been transitioning students into the high school of a quality that, of an academic quality that is lacking. And so it's really important that we look at the entire system and not just the high school. It's very difficult to turn around a low performing high school. You have to understand what's happening at lower levels, and the ISD has been actively engaged for quite some time, and we have been attempting to continue to collaborate with the ISD as well.
I'm glad to hear that, that's, thank you.
All right, Pam and Cassandra.
Okay, just a couple of points. Michelle raised the thought of mitigating factors, and Michelle, also, we were talking, reminded me of a study in Detroit that looked at forty thou, the lead levels of around forty thousand children where only twenty-three, twenty-three, if you count, did not have a lead level, did not have lead in their bloodstream. I mean, the issue that we're seeing in Flint, obviously, again, we're making this greater connection between these other factors that play into academic performances. This study also looked at the outcomes of academic performance as it related to the MEAT score. So this was a 2010 study, but I'm just wondering if we're also taking those factors into consideration as we make these very rigid decisions that we're making. One of the other things Kathy brought up, the thought of DPS and how this will play into the DPS situation, and you did say that you can't really speak to this, but if an emergency manager is removed, then the CEO model, as Cassandra pointed out, which is an EM on steroids, could possibly play a greater, I mean, that could surplant that. Then a few other questions that I have are related to some of the information that I received while talking to some of the educators throughout the state, as far as the process that was used last year. Looking at, what is, there were, there were many who said that they weren't clear of what the cycle, you know, what the cycle is, what they can look forward to next year. As it related to this year, many talked about how it seemed as if it was a car that was being built as it was moving down the road. So there weren't, some of the assessments, the testing, I think Michelle talked about testing, and it was more testing that was placed on top of testing that was already going on, so there wasn't time to really think through what was already in place, and then the additional testing that was required. Just, I guess, greater communication around, you know, what is the focus for next year? And also, I guess my question is, I hear Brian talking about moving forward, how the communication will work between the department and the SRO, the Office DTMB, but how is that, how did that work? How is that working now, and how has that worked up to this point? And then I think that that, even that trickles down to how districts are communicated to, and so that plays a role into the confusion at the district level, if that communication is not happening here. So those are, I think, some of, I think that, that would be it.
Yep. I want to start with the concern about clarity. I communicate and streamline all information to superintendents. There are some superintendents that are very actively engaged with their executive teams and their staff, and so soon as I send an email, soon as I make a call, soon as a text message goes out, their entire organization knows about it, right? And there are some superintendents where that doesn't quite happen. Didn't get the email, didn't remember to call, didn't do this, didn't do that. And then there are all those folks in between. The purpose of streamlining communication directly to superintendents is so that there is a clear and active way to be transparent. And so there are always going to be those outliers of folks who didn't get information, and we'll do the best that we can to mitigate that. But I do want to be clear that every superintendent has my cell phone number. I text quite often. They've gotten emails from me at all hours of the day and night, on weekends and weeknights. So that is how we communicate, because prior to transitioning over, there were a lot of different emails and calls flying where people were confused. So I want to just be clear about how we communicate with the local districts that have priority schools. As far as the CEO option in Detroit, that's not a discussion that we're having right now. We are in the process of supporting the efforts on the ground, and we will definitely be in dialogue with the community when that takes place. I live on the east side of Detroit, Detroit is very near and dear to my heart, and I grew up like the kids in Detroit. And so we're going to make sure that we are actively engaged in that process when the time comes, however, the time has not come yet. In terms of your concern about testing and time, the testing decisions come out of the MDE, and so that's probably a dialogue for Superintendent Wiston.
So this was additional information that I understand was required.
Paris and the six to eight.
Yeah.
Okay, so Paris is a, it stands for Performance Information System, and what that does is that allows us every six to eight weeks to see how many kids have been suspended, how many kids are truant, and which kids have transitioned from tier two to tier three. It's important for us to be able to dialogue with superintendents about that information, because if children are being overly, oversuspended, or if they have a, you know, a suspension rate for certain kids than others, right? That needs to be flagged prior to assessments and prior to high stakes decision. You cannot flag those kind of challenges if you don't know that it happens until six months later. You have to know when it's happening in order to provide a mid-course correction. And so that's the purpose of collecting that information and dialoguing about it.
Right, so, and I know, you've probably heard this from multiple districts, because this was multiple districts that brought this up. It was the timing of when this information was requested, and it sounded like it was going into the classrooms, and there were educators who already had additional testing in addition to the testing that's done here. And so that added an additional burden, and it was, and it came down at a time when there was no time for there to be integration of these, of the data collection.
Yeah, and at the end of this year, we're going to do what's called an end of year sort of feedback session, where I get a chance to sit with different superintendents in different parts of the state, to hear what worked and what didn't work well. And so we'll dialogue about that and make the changes that are necessary, to make sure that it is helpful. The other component about how it's working in terms of MDE and SRO, I connect quite frequently with Norma Jean Sass and Brian. I work very closely with Karen McPhee and obviously all of the leadership at the DTMB. So I think it's going well. If Norma Jean has a question for me, she calls or texts, and likewise. So she and I have a regular time that we check in, and it's not anything formal most of the time. Most of the time it's like, here's my priorities, here's the questions, I need this, I need that, and that's how we've engaged. She's a wonderful leader, I really like working with her, and I think it's going well, quite honestly. And with that said, the last component is obviously the poverty factor, and I always say to people when they say, consider poverty, I say, thank God my teachers didn't. Thank God my teachers didn't. Because I, just to your point, is that I wanted to be held to the same standard, I grew up in California, as the kids in Orange County. Because I wanted to be able to go into a college classroom and know that I could read as well as those kids. And I was the black girl who grew up in a single parent household, and I was the black girl who grew up where my brother was shot and murdered when I was twelve. And my brother, my other brother did smoke crack cocaine in my, in my bathroom. But thank God, my teacher still said, make sure you study for that physics exam, because I wouldn't have the opportunity to work with the governor's office had I not had the skill set to do so. And so I understand full well how people want to take poverty into account, but thank God my teachers didn't.
My question wasn't poverty, it was about the childhood lead poisoning, and those.
I'm not an ex, a medical expert in that area, and so what I heard from you was about the poverty component and taking that into consideration when making high stakes decisions.
That was her. No, I said she reminded me, and that's a concern of mine, is that we may not have the skill set to do that. And so we're already seeing how this is playing out in one area, and so I'm concerned about us making these high stake decisions, and we're not concerned about these other factors that we know about very clearly.
And I think we would be remiss to just kind of say we're not concerned, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that.
You just say you weren't the expert.
I'm not a medical expert.
Okay.
Pam, I'm not. But I do know that when kids come with challenges, if there's a system set up to address those challenges without excuse, they can make it.
All right, Cassandra, please.
Yes, so I wanted to follow up on Kathleen's questions, because I'm still trying to understand the decision-making process around the CEOs, and I think if we understand it, then I think the other schools that you're working with might have a better understanding as well. You mentioned East Detroit High School, which I did review the 2010, 2011, and 2012 cohort lists that are on your website. And I do see East Detroit High School on the 2011 cohort list, but I didn't see Bellevue, I didn't see Pleasant View, and I didn't see Kelly, which tells me that they came on the list after the last cohort list that you have on your website. In the time that they would have come on that list, East Detroit High School also eliminated an eight and a half million dollar deficit without any hope from the state. They implemented reforms around staffing, recruitment, discipline, they have a new superintendent, they have an agreement with the ISD. And they also have ACT composite scores that are higher than some other high schools in the state. And there are twenty-eight states and twenty-eight schools in the state that are ranked at zero, so I'm still trying to understand why East Detroit? What was it about this school district that you decided was the one that needed a CEO?
I want to correct you on just a couple of things. Bellevue Elementary was identified in 2013, and they had a top to bottom ranking of one.
On the three cohort lists that are on your website.
I have to double check those lists to make sure that they're accurate and that you and I are looking at the same information.
Okay. So I guess my question is, again, of all of the schools that you're working with, of all of the districts, why East Detroit? What was the decision making into that?
I mentioned earlier, when John asked the question about the criteria that went into that, and so you guys have that information. When we look at the number of schools that are the lowest in the entire state, there are certain schools that we do not, that do not fall under our purview. So if a school has an EM, if they are under consent agreement, there are different parameters there. Among the lowest performing high schools in the state of Michigan, East Detroit is there. We would be remiss to just try and turn around a high school when we know that the feeder pattern is demonstrating that the kids feeding the high school are too far behind to turn that high school around. You have to look at the entire system. So the rationale, to your point, was what is in the full letter of the law? Can we go into certain schools? And any answer, if the answer is yes, then they're on this side of the house for further consideration. The answer is no, there's nothing I can do to go into certain schools. It just so happened that East Detroit was, A, among the lowest performing high schools in the state, when we look at the number of cycles that they were identified, the current top to bottom ranking that we have, as well as the proficiency levels. And then we have a full understanding of the kids feeding from the lower schools into the high school. And so the determination had been made to have a CEO who had the academic expertise to do that work and be on the ground in collaboration with the district. However, they are not, we're not doing this work in isolation. We are collaborating with the ISD as well as the school district and the superintendent, as I mentioned earlier. And we are positioning ourselves to make sure that there are further determinations that are going to be made, you know, in the following years, which we're ramping up.
So it's their ranking and it's the best for not just the schools?
It's their ranking, their proficiency, and all of the schools feeding that system.
Okay.
Michelle?
I just wanted to clarify what I meant by poverty. And I like to use as an example, my, one of my sons, who I ended up adopting when he was sixteen years old, who'd been in and out of foster care, had, you know, parents who'd had some serious issues with substance abuse. So when he came to me, he had less than a one point, grade point average. He had no health care to attend to, his hearing impairment. So when we took him and got him back into the same school, same Detroit High School, when we got him attended to, and I made sure that he was in class every day, he went, he went up, by the time he graduated, he had four pointed his, the next semester, and brought up his grade point average. So it's the same school, the same teachers, and now he's learning because at home he has structure and he has, so, and so I applaud whatever parent raised you, because they obviously did what was ever necessary, and you did whatever is necessary, but there are many kids that are in poverty, and they are smart children. They are, they have great potential, and I think about all the potential that's wasted. But to say that that poverty does not matter, in his case and in many other cases, is an illusion.
I, yeah.
Because it does matter.
I, yeah, and I'm.
And studies, when they look at the top to bottom list, and you look at the relative, and then, and the, what's at the Mackinaw Center, you can see there is this very, very strong correlation with the level of the socioeconomic, you know, impact. It's not, and it's not that those kids aren't smart, and no one here is saying that those kids are not smart and capable. It's saying that you need to have the supports and the structures to help ensure that you're in school and get the instruction. And it's not, it would have been wrong to blame those teachers, the same teachers, because now he was actually going to school on a regular basis with the, with the healthcare and support that he needed.
Again, there are just some points we're going to have to agree to disagree on. I understand the correlation. What I don't fundamentally support is a parallel system that lowers the bar for high poverty kids.
I don't want to do that.
Okay, so I just want to be clear about that. The other thing is, I want to be clear about, is that there are high poverty schools in Massachusetts, and I would love for this board to go and check out Roxbury Prep, which is in Dorchester, and some other schools. And so there are high performing, high poverty schools in this country who are doing this work, and it's not that they don't understand that the kids are poor, or that they've got all of these problems, in spite of those circumstances. They've developed a system that is of equal weight with the kids coming out of Boston Latin, so that those kids can make it. All I'm suggesting is, I hear you, please don't create a parallel system for poor kids.
No, I don't.
We've never said that.
They need more supports, and that's what they're doing in Massachusetts.
I mean, we have a lot of high poverty, high ELL students and schools in the state that are performing at a very high level. that are performing at a very high level. We don't just need to go to Boston to do it. We are way behind schedule, Kathleen?
I just wanted to say that I was concerned about the poverty issue too, and it seems to me that we, it's not just, no one's suggesting a parallel system. What we want is to give support and assistance to the families, many of whom might not know how to help their children the way we think they should. And that's, that's the thing, that we have to recognize, that we have to work with the families as well as the children in the schools. That, that's the point I wanted to make.
Sure.
Absolutely.
All right, so Natasha, thank you for being here. Thank you for working with the department. Thank you for communicating with Norma Jean and I. Thank you for sharing with us what, where you are heading and what you are working on. I certainly understand the feeder system concept and needing to work with feeders. If we're going to fix a high school, we need to address and fix the feeder schools as well. So I thank you, and of course, I agree with you that a collaboration model is really where we need to head. So I thank you for your work, and it's difficult, and, but the department and you and the governor's office, you know, we need to continue to build that good relationship so that schools and students are getting the services they need.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are going to bypass the presentation on state, on the Every Student Succeeds Act. We'll see if we can catch it this afternoon. If we can, we'll go on to the next board meeting with that. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is discussion regarding criteria for grant programs. Does anyone have questions for staff on the three grant criteria programs that are listed on the agenda? If so, we will get those questions answered before this afternoon. So please let me know if you have any questions now. Does the board wish to go back to any conversations on item B before we adjourn for lunch? Or are we all set on B with the understanding that Eileen is going to give us some additional thoughts on wordage? Does anybody else need or wish to speak on B?
We are offering this, good beginning, an excellent set of guidance, I think, that folks want, including, Chris Weidman, I saw it the other day, who's been a strong advocate of the superintendent of schools, really, this kind of guidance for how to support LGDTQ kids. But the public now and others should please weigh in and give ideas on how to improve this kind of guidance that is important for us to make, to, for all the reasons we heard. I think, Ricky, you were particularly eloquent. 150,000 kids are out there who we need to encourage as best we can, an environment that helps them thrive and succeed and be connected to the people teaching them. And I appreciate your, your more eloquent than any of us articulation of why this is important and how this works.
All right, with that, good afternoon. The time is now 12:30, and a quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the State Board of Education meeting for March 8, 2016 is called to order. Before we break for lunch, as you know, my evaluation is on the agenda for later in the meeting. According to Section AA of the Open Meeting Act, a public officer can request a closed session in order to consider a period for personal evaluation. Therefore, I will entertain a motion filed by a roll call vote to go into executive session for the purpose of a superintendent evaluation.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Singnan, Marilyn, we'll call, roll.
Austin?
Yes.
Becto?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Ramos Fontini?
She's in.
Strauss?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Wisar?
Yes.
Siley?
Yes.
All right, so we'll adjourn from lunch from 12:30 to 1:30.
Cassandra had a hard time getting to it yesterday. We were having all kinds of difficulties.